Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson, city manager Isaiah Hughley, Pops Barnes, District 1, Glenn Davis, District 2, Bruce Huff, District 3, Toya Tucker, District 4, Charmaine Crabbe, District 5, Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6,
Joanne Kogle, District 7,
Walker Garrett, District 8, Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor,
Tyson Bagley, Post 10 at Large Counselor,
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
The January 23rd council meeting. We're pleased to have you join us. We're going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that's by asking God's grace and presence as we go about the city's business. So I would like to invite Pastor Ralph Hewling from St. James Baptist Church to the microphone. Pastor Hewling? Welcome, sir. Chris, can you turn that light on, please?
Evening, city manager. Would you join us in prayer, please? Most high God, our saving God, Jehovah Jireh, our provider. Dear God, we thank thee for this privilege to come before your divine presence, heaven father, through the vehicle of prayer. And as we come, dear God, we ask that you would give this city council a very conscientious awareness of your divine presence. God, we thank you for their civil service. Dear God, Lord, city manager, mayor, and this council, and all those that are involved, even the citizens that think it not robbery to come to share in this work. God, we know, heaven father, that anarchy is not something that we need in our community. So, heaven father, we pray that you would impart divine wisdom for this council to be able to deal with the issues that come before them on a weekly basis. God, we just thank you now, once again, for your presence. Guide them, heaven father. Let them be cognizant of your will. And, heaven father, we know that your ways are higher than our ways. And so we just thank you for what you have done, what you're going to do. And it's in the blessed name of our Savior, Jesus our Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Hewling, thank you, sir. We appreciate you, and thank you, church, for sharing you with us this evening. Thank you. If you would please stand and join me in a pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first order of business is to approve the minutes of the January 9th council meeting and executive session. We've got a motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, motion second. Are there any edits or any questions that need to be made? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? All right, good. All right, first up this evening, we've got a presentation of a revenue investigation that's conducted by Troutman Pepper. And I'd like to invite Mr. Charlie Peeler to the microphone. And I will tell you, because it's a lot of information, the way we are going to work through this is we're going to let Mr. Peeler give his entire report and make any notes that you've got that you want to ask questions or comments. And then when he's completed his comments, then you'll be able to ask questions. And then we'll use the same process as we move through the answers from the finance department. So just if you would, just make your notes. And then when you're done, when the speakers are finished, we'll give you an opportunity to address them. Mr. Peeler, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. My name is Charlie Peeler. I'm a partner with the law firm Troutman Pepper. And we were retained to look into publicly reported issues involving a backlog of business and alcoholic beverage license renewals. We conducted a preliminary investigation based on that. We recommended that the council authorize the retention of Acuitas Inc., that's a forensic accounting firm, to assist us with our investigation. In conducting the investigation, we engaged in multiple site visits. In Columbus, we interviewed both in person and over the telephone and over video conferencing several individuals with knowledge of the issues that we were looking into. We also engaged in extensive data analysis. The data that we reviewed was provided to us by the revenue division and by the finance director. We were charged with looking at really answering three questions. One is, what is the cause of the backlog of business and alcoholic beverage licenses? How many licenses are backlogged? And how much money has that backlog cost the city? During the course of our investigation, there were additional issues that were raised. And so council instructed us to look into some additional issues, including allegations that employees were being retaliated against, that inspections and code were not performing its duties, that there was inconsistent waiver of penalties and interest, and then certain accounting issues. Based on that investigation, including answering the three questions and the additional topics, we did prepare a comprehensive written report. Council members have that. It's my understanding that that's going to be released to the public. It details our findings and also makes some recommendations. Through the course of the investigation, we were in December. The internal auditor presented some findings related to these issues. We were asked to look into those. And so we did conduct an additional supplemental investigation in response to the internal auditor's findings. And then that is reported in a supplemental report that's a part of the larger report. Okay, so looking at the first question that we looked at, and that is the backlog of business and alcoholic beverage licenses. What is the cause of the backlog? So there is a significant backlog. We looked into determining what the cause of that was and found that there was no single one factor, but there were compounding factors that contributed to this backlog. Those include staffing shortages and insufficient training, insufficient processes and procedures, and limitations of the current software system. There were extensions of the deadline that business license renewals were due. That was a contributor to the backlog. There was a failure to send delinquency notices to businesses that were delinquent or to take enforcement action against delinquent businesses. That contributed to the backlog. There was also an increasing volume in businesses that require licenses, which means there was more work to be done. And then finally, there was a failure by all levels of management to timely recognize, report, and address this snowballing backlog. How many licenses are backlogged? First, we defined, we had to set out to define backlog. And the definition there is all late and delinquent license renewals. So a late renewal is a business license that was not renewed before the end of the license year. In other words, it was renewed after the license year for which the application had been submitted. For alcoholic beverage license renewals, those are late if they're renewed after December 31st of the year prior to the license year. A delinquent license for both types, so for business and for alcoholic beverage licenses, a license is considered delinquent if it was due in any prior year but remain unissued as of September 25th, 2023. That's the date of our data pull, of our data collection. And so that's a delinquent license. So we looked at the relevant time period, January 1 of 2016 through that September 25th, 2023 date. We chose that seven-year period for a couple of reasons. One is that it's inclusive of pre and post-COVID years, and it was also within the city's document retention period. What we found is that during that period, the city issued 56,920 business licenses, 3,480 alcoholic beverage licenses. There were late renewals. Again, those are licenses that were in fact issued, but were issued after the license year in an amount of 4,056 business licenses and 1,691 alcoholic beverage licenses. A couple of trends of an increase of late renewals. You'll see on the slides, late business licenses increased from 4% in 2017 through '19 to 8% in '20, spiked to 22% in '21, and then 10% in '22. Alcoholic beverage licenses, the percentage of late licenses was about 25% in 2017, and then that spiked to 79% of alcoholic beverage licenses were issued late in 2023. Delinquent licenses, we identified 24,896 business licenses that are delinquent, 532 alcoholic beverage licenses. So the method that Troutman and Acuitas used to determine whether a license was delinquent is we asked the revenue division for the last license year in which a business had a valid license renewal, and we assumed a delinquency for each year through 2023 or the year when the Occupational Tax Division designated the business as closed. So if it's designated as closed, then we stop counting them as delinquent. If they remained open in the system, then we continue to count those as delinquent. A couple of trends there. Delinquent business licenses increased from 13% in 2017 to 44% in '22. And alcoholic beverage licenses, 2% in 2017 to 20% in 2022. Good, trying to put a cost on that backlog. We set out to determine the average cost of a license. So we took the number of late and delinquent renewals, and we multiplied that by the expected tax revenue, taking into consideration the time value of money. So we used two different methods to do that. One is the average actual gross receipt. So under that method, we know who the delinquent businesses are. So we asked for actual gross receipts of those businesses in the last year that they had an active license. And then we use that number times the tax rate to determine what the projected revenue should have been collected by the city for each of those businesses. There were some system limitations in that in that of the 8,800 businesses that were delinquent, actual gross revenue was only available for about 4,200 of those. And so we deemed that that was not the most accurate manner in which to calculate the cost of the backlog. And so we used another method, which was what we called the average estimated cost, which we calculated by dividing the total cost of the licenses by the total number of licenses issued by year. So what you'll see in the next couple of slides with costs, there's a floor and a ceiling. The floor would be the average actual gross receipts, the ceiling being the average estimated cost. The actual loss is going to be somewhere in the middle. Okay, what we found is, so we looked at the estimated financial loss, and we deemed it to be the difference in the time value of money between the years the renewals were due and the years that they were issued. So looking first at late renewals, we'll look in a minute at delinquencies. For late renewals, the estimated financial loss for business licenses is $165,000. And alcoholic beverage licenses are $67,500. And so again, these are licenses that have been renewed. They've just renewed, been renewed late. And so we looked at what was the time value of that money had these licenses been renewed on time. Same calculation for, and then you see on the slides here the math that we followed for the calculation of business licenses and for the alcoholic beverage licenses. Good, looking at delinquent renewals, the numbers are much larger. So these are, remember, these are business licenses that have not, that are outstanding but have not been renewed. So your business license loss for delinquencies using the average actual gross receipts, that's the floor method, is $3.5 million. And the average estimated cost, the ceiling method, is approximately $6.5 million. So this is the time value loss for active businesses. In other words, we assume, and assumed in these numbers is that the licenses will be collected, but just have not been. For active businesses, for closed businesses, we assume that that is revenue that will never be collected. So that's a permanent revenue loss. And it's important to note that the current estimated value of the total revenue the city should have collected from active businesses that are delinquent is between $20 million and $27 million. So if our assumptions are wrong and the city does not collect these delinquencies, then that loss amount can climb to between $20 million and $27 million. Looking at alcoholic beverage licenses, $183,000. That's the time value of money for delinquent alcoholic beverage licenses. Again, and that assumes that these outstanding licenses are going to be renewed, that money is going to be collected. The total outstanding of that collection is about $736,000. So putting those together, late and delinquent businesses using the floor method, average actual gross receipts is $3.7 million to $6.62 million. Again, that assumes that this outstanding money is going to be collected by the city. And then financial loss for late and delinquent alcoholic beverage licenses, $251,000 under the average estimated cost method. Again, just to bear in mind that the analysis assumes that the city can promptly collect from businesses that are delinquent. The revenue loss from delinquent licenses of now closed businesses likely a permanent loss. That's the way that we designated it in our calculations. And then also bear in mind that statute of limitations may bar collection of some of the earlier years of 2016 through 2019. If accurate, then that is going to drive up that permanent loss because those dollars, instead of being deemed time value loss, monies are going to be permanent loss dollar for dollar. And so just by way of example, that could drive up the loss amount between $5.7 million and $6.3 million if that money is, if those years are barred from collection. Again, we were asked along the way to look into some additional issues that had been publicly reported. There were some allegations that folks in city government had been improperly retaliated against as a result of either their decision to raise issues or their decision to cooperate in our investigation. We did not determine those allegations to be founded. There were issues raised that inspection and code, enforcement of business and alcoholic beverage licenses were not appropriate. What we found on that front is that the Occupational Tax Division failed to submit delinquent business license list to inspection and code in 2021 and '22. As I mentioned earlier, that is a significant contributing factor to the level of delinquencies because those who were delinquent did not receive notice of it, nor were they pursued for enforcement. We found that the Office of, excuse me, the Occupational Tax Division did send a delinquency list over to inspections and code in September of '23. It's our understanding that letters then went out after that. There were allegations that the revenue management was inappropriately calling off enforcement action requests sent to inspection and code. What we found there is that inspections and code, they defer to revenue management about whether to enforce a delinquency or a late renewal against a particular business. We did review some emails between occupational tax staff, inspection and code, and management that are inconsistent in that staff would ask code enforcement to enforce something, and then revenue management would instruct them not to. In our recommendations, we make a recommendation that there be a clear policy on how that delinquency list gets delivered to inspection and code and how it gets worked. There were allegations about an inconsistent waiver of penalties and interest. When we looked into those allegations, what we found is that there is no clear written policy governing the criteria for waiver, which approvals are required or any substantiation or documentation is required. There is widespread confusion about who within the city has authority to waive penalties and interest, and that it is likely, in fact, that penalties and interest are being waived inconsistently. In our recommendations, we recommend that the city adopt a clear policy on authorities in circumstances under which penalties and interests can be modified or waived. There were a couple of issues raised with respect to different accounting principles. And those include the treatment of uncollectible ambulance charges that are remaining on the collection system. What we determined is that there are charges uncollectible that are on the system. There is also a practice of reclassifying as revenue payments that are received for licenses that have not yet issued at the end of the fiscal year. That in fact is happening. Our recommendation is that both of those accounting practices be disclosed to your external auditor, and then they can give the city an opinion as to whether those are appropriate or not. All right, here are some recommendations. We've been through a few, but I'll hit a few more. So based on everything that we looked into, Troutman and Acuitas recommends that the city, number one, take a hard look at policies and procedures related to the issuance of licenses and the collection and treatment of licensed revenue. Those policies need to be overhauled, and they need to be clarified. The recommendation that the city increase automation and synchronization of systems used to process licenses. We determined that it is a highly manual process with lots of individuals having to touch lots of pieces of paper and make multiple keying entries in multiple spreadsheets in order to track payment. That needs to be automated, particularly as the number of businesses that require licenses continues to increase. The recommendation that there be an enhanced monitoring and enforcement of late and delinquent licenses, including revisiting the system for detecting, monitoring, and following up on delinquent excise taxes. One way that the city could have avoided this significant number of backlog licenses is to more timely send delinquency notices and then consider for enforcement action those businesses that are inappropriately delinquent. Increase attention to employee retention and training. There has been a drop in staffing. There has been turnover in the relevant division. And there's no clear training that would expedite onboarding of new personnel. That's something that the city can increase attention to. Review the, and overhaul the handling of mail. We discovered over 1,000 pieces of unopened returned mail in connection with our investigation. And there needs to be a very clear policy on the treatment of mail. And then finally, increase payment tracking controls, separation of duties, and security. There were instances where people who are receiving money are also issuing licenses. There's no clear policy on who has access to the vault and under what circumstances in the city would benefit from clear policies that make sure that appropriate separation of duties and security of cash and checks are followed. After the internal auditor gave the report in December to the council, we were instructed to look into those findings, which we did. And the next part of the report deals with our findings in response to that. So by way of background, December 5th, 2023, the internal auditor presented her findings that there was $45.1 million in unworked, unbanked revenue from fiscal years 2019 through 2023, stemming from the revenue division's processing of occupational tax licenses. We've worked again with Acuitas to look into those findings to determine whether the payments identified by the internal auditor were in fact unworked and unbanked. We requested from the internal auditor the work papers relied upon so that we could make sure we were looking at the same information. These work papers included 10,706 individual payments and related information regarding batch deposit, business license account, identifying information and payment amount for each payment. Acuitas took a random sample of 102 of the 10,706 payments, essentially 20 for each fiscal year plus two test samples. For each of these, we requested copies of the, or front and back copies of each canceled check, the deposit slip that would include the deposit and the business license that should have issued as a result of that deposit. The finance director provided us all of that information for the 102 in the random sample. The checks were pulled directly from the city's online banking account, which is reflected on the canceled check images. So we took that information, and we compared it to the entries on the internal auditor's work papers. And we also determined whether business licenses had been issued. And Acuitas found that 100% of the 102 selections were indeed both banked and had been worked by the revenue division. We did not find supporting evidence for the claim that there was $45.1 million in unbanked, unworked revenue. Again, 100% of the samples tested had either, had 100% had been deposited, and 100% had been, also had been worked, meaning that either a business license had issued or we had identified that a problem letter, problem letter, excuse me, had been issued to those businesses. So Acuitas and working with us, you know, we're not saying that out of that 10,000 that that is necessarily a statistically significant sample. The strategy we used was to take that first 100, and if there were any anomalies revealed, then to look deeper. But we're all comfortable that since we did not uncover any anomalies in that first 102, that those payments had in fact been deposited and worked. Just kind of in summary of the testing that we did, we looked at, you know, this is a chart by year, the total number of deposits in that 20 sample size for each fiscal year that we verified the deposit and then the percentage there at the end. So we looked at about $404 total, $1,000 in deposits. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Peeler. Any questions or comments, council?
Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. Mr. Peeler, who asked you to complete the supplemental investigation of the internal auditor's findings?
The mayor.
It was my understanding that you were hired by council, not the mayor. Is that your understanding also?
Yeah, yes.
Did any council member ask for that?
The mayor asked us to do that.
Okay. The 102 samplings that you took, who provided those to you?
Well, we took the internal auditor's sheet of 10,000 payments that were on her work papers. And then we used a random sampling function in Excel. papers, and then we used a random sampling function in Excel to turn all of those randomized, and then took the first 102.
Okay. Did you see the date that your samplings were banked?
Yes, that's on the canceled checks.
Okay, so were they banked after the internal auditor was in that department?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's a pretty important answer to have, because we know that when the internal auditor went into the finance department, then after that point, they were, temporary employees were authorized to come in and start taking care of this issue. So I would like to know what day they were banked. If you're saying that, you know, that this doesn't, you know, support the internal auditor's findings, then what day they were banked, if they were banked after she was there, that's a pretty important piece of information that we should have.
Yeah, and if you'll look, when you look at the supplemental report, at the end, there are some schedules, and we redacted some of the, all of the identifying information for the specific businesses, but the deposit date for the samples are in the calendar year. So there are deposits in 20, in 22, I'm sorry, there are deposits in 23, 22.
What page are you on?
I'm at the, there are about the last five pages of the supplemental report, and those schedules, there are deposits. So that's the schedule of the samples that we took. So those are, there are deposits in 23, 22, 21, 20, and 2019. So the information, again, this information was provided to us by the internal auditor, and it appears that the deposits were made in the appropriate calendar year.
Okay, do you know how the internal auditor calculated her findings? I know you set out how you calculated your findings. Did she use either one of your methods, or did she have a different method that she was using?
So I don't think she looked at the same issues that we were looking at. We were in the original part of our investigation. We were looking at, you know, what's the cause of the backlog, how many are backlog, and what is the cost of the backlog? She didn't look at that. I think she was looking at transactions that had occurred that were present on what's called the lockbox spreadsheet, and I think she took that information and then determined that those transactions constitute unworked, unbanked. So that's not, that's not what we looked at the first. So in other words, her findings don't change at all, that our conclusion that there's between 20 and 26 million dollars in outstanding revenue that should be collected. This is a different analysis, as I understand what she did, and so.
So it's not apples and, is it apples and oranges?
It is, right.
So your numbers could be off because one's looking at apples and one's looking at oranges?
Well, I think the apples are done in a manner that is reliable, and that is our finding that, you know, there's $6 million time value of money lost that could be up to $26 million if not collected. What she was looking at is whether specific transactions were banked or worked, and so what we did is went behind those and determined that there was significant evidence that those transactions had been banked through the deposited checks and had been worked through the issuance of business licenses.
Do you say that 102 samplings is significant out of 10,000 or more?
No, I don't, I don't. That was.
But that's the terminology you just used, isn't it?
Well, I think I, what I meant to say was that we don't contend that 102 out of 10,000 is a statistically sound sample. We started with 102 to determine whether there were any anomalies that would warrant further investigation, and so in the professional opinion of the forensic accountants, once they realized there were no anomalies in that 102 random sample, then they were comfortable not looking deeper into that.
Were you asked not to look deeper?
No, no, no one put any limitations on what we did.
Okay, I think that's all my questions. Let me just check really quickly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Peeler, one of my concerns in the report that you have given us is that you said more than once that we did not have the proper policies and procedures in order to deal with the issue of business licenses and how they are, how they're dealt with and so forth. I'm very concerned that we supposedly have people in the chain of command in the finance department, if you will, that should be able to develop these policies and procedures and enforce these policies and procedures, and I think that that goes all the way up the line in the chain of command. If this council decides, would Troutman Pepper or some other group that you might suggest help this council develop these policies? I'm not, I'm not satisfied that the finance department would develop the procedures, and they haven't done it in, you know, years. Is this something that Troutman Pepper would assist, or is this something that Troutman Pepper could suggest to us, another party that would, could assist us to make these policies and procedures and put them in place?
Yes, to, really, to all of those. We can certainly assist in developing policies and procedures. The first thing that we would do is to look at similarly sized cities across Georgia and across the nation and try to identify how other cities tackle this issue. All cities issue business licenses, they collect an occupation tax associated with it. Not all of them have this significant backlog, and so first step is try to find a peer city that does it right, and to take guidance from them.
I am concerned that you said more than once that there was a policy or there was a procedure, and it was not followed. That concerns me very much, and I think that our, I think that the finance department has got to look at these policies and procedures. The thing that you said, there were some people who's, who's interested in what are forgiven. Well, I'm not sure the finance department has the authority to do that, and so I'm very concerned that some of those kinds of things were happening, and nobody seemed to say, hold on. One of the things that I have also been told, and you, I think, alluded to this, is the training of new employees. If I work in the finance department, and I don't know how to process these business licenses, and we hire Mr. Fay, and I have to train him, and I don't know how to do it, he doesn't know how to do it either. This is purely an example, Mr. Fay, but I'm very concerned that we do not have training in place for people who are going to be handling this kind of money. Am I wrong in that? Do we have, do we, do we have any training that you were made aware of?
We certainly identified as a significant contributing factor to the backlog, a lack of training and a lack of clear policy for existing employees and for newly onboarded employees.
Well, this is, quite frankly, this is something that I'm not sure that we can come to a final conclusion, our counsel, on this until we have some time to take a look at your report and what you have presented to us. I'm very concerned that we do not seem to have the authority or the whatever in the finance department to make sure that all of these i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. We are dealing with citizens' money, and when I have citizens call me and say to me, we've been trying to get a business license for three years, that's troubling. So I appreciate your work and your report to us. Thank you, Ms. Peeler.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff.
Thank you, sir, for your report. In listening to this, in your professional opinion, we have some issues and some things to correct, but also in your professional opinion, you stated that there's not $45.1 million missing based on the sampling and everything. So the message I want to get out to the public today, because I had this issue and this conversation everywhere I went during the month of December, and this says we have things to correct, we may have some training to implement, we may have some things to do, but no one stole any money. There were receipts and things for the money. I think it needs to be a better understanding of the lockbox system. I had that conversation with them so that the public better understands how the money flows and how the procedure goes on, but am I correct in saying in everything that you did with the auditors that there's not $45.1 million missing?
Right, so bottom line is, we determined there's between 20 and 26 million dollars in uncollected but owed money that needs to be collected, and then we separately determined that we did not substantiate the internal auditor's finding that there is $45.1 million in unworked, unbanked transactions. So those were two separate analyses, and, but yes, you're correct, we did not determine that.
So if we had envelopes or something that didn't get worked, that would be considered the uncollected part?
Correct.
Okay, in those numbers, okay, because I remember back in December, the finance director, Stuart, where you are now, and answered the question over and over that the money's in the bank. It's either uncollected or in the bank. I spoke with the deputy city manager later, the same thing, and when she presented to the council, money's in the bank. So we have, according to you and everybody else I've heard from, we have the necessary documentation to show us that the money's in the bank.
Right, the 102 transaction sampling that we took revealed no anomalies.
Okay, and the part of uncollected, unworked ones, it would be, I think you told me last time, statute of limitations may be, what, four years?
Three years.
Three years. Okay, so we're in 2024 now, so we'd be looking at 2021, 22, 23 coming forward, okay, okay. So if that money, of those monies, what's the usual collection rate when you're behind three years? What's the usual collection rate? Have you ever been through this before?
Well, I don't know that I could handicap what the percent success would be. Certainly, a recommendation is that this money is owed, this money is due, and the city needs to put appropriate resource towards collecting that money.
Okay, and the part collected, if we collect, I don't know, 70% of it, that would be 70% of the said revenue that would end up being 26 million or so later in uncollected funds?
Right, yeah, that would be, in that range, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tucker.
Yes, I think I kind of got confused, so I want to walk it back. So per your findings, it states no evidence to support the claim that there is $45.1 million in unbanked, unworked revenue. I've heard some numbers. How much would you say is unbanked or unworked or uncollected? What's that total so I can write it on this part of the findings?
So there is between 20 and 26 million dollars in outstanding money that is owed to the city based on our calculations from the data we received from the revenue division.
Okay. When you were doing the original investigation of the revenue division, were there any checks that appeared that may not have been deposited and was probably stale dated at that time of your investigation?
Yes, so we identified about 150 stale-dated, undeposited checks totaling about the half a million dollars. So that half a million dollars, though, is included in our findings of what is outstanding to be collected. So that's not separate, that's included in that money. Yes, we did identify those.
Okay, so the, you said 150?
Right.
Stale-dated checks that had not been deposited into our city account, and that money is included in this $20 million, 20 to 26 million that is currently unbanked, unworked, uncollected.
Right, that is certainly uncollected.
Okay, thank you. I might have some more questions. I'm trying to read through, because we just got this, so.
Counselor Begley.
So I do want to clarify that apples and oranges, I understand it. So the internal auditor was talking about undeposited money that had revenue as opposed to your report was focused on undeposited money that did not have revenue, right? So she was looking at, there was revenue and somehow the money's missing versus uncollected. That's the two differences, correct? Sorry, not missing, but she was saying there was revenue but no money, was the internal auditor, and your report was focused on uncollected, meaning not deposited but no revenue.
Yeah, I think that's, I'll say it a little differently. So our analysis was focused on what money is due from businesses to the city that has not been collected. In other words, I think of it in terms of account receivable.
Okay.
Business context. What money do my customers owe me that I don't have? And that's that 20 to 26 million dollars. The internal auditor looked at transactions that ultimately were booked in the revenue division as worked transactions, and I think contested that they were really, that they really reflected money that had been deposited and transactions that had been worked. I think that the internal auditor determined that they had not been, so then we went behind that and asked for evidence that deposits had been made and that licenses had been issued and were provided that information from the finance director.
So based on those two reports, if there was revenue, we had, we received money deposited it. However, there was revenue we did not recognize because we never deposited or collected the money.
Right.
Okay, and then, and I think we're saying, in a best-case scenario, we missed out on, just on the business license, in a best-case scenario, we missed out on three and a half to six and a half million dollars, but that's based on the dependency of us collecting another 16 and a half to 20 and a half that's out there, and so if we don't collect that 16 and a half to 20 and a half million, the worst case scenario goes to 20 to 27 million of money that we missed out on because we didn't collect it.
Yes, exactly. Now, I will also caveat that there may be, in our findings, businesses that we deem delinquent in years where the business was actually closed, but the business had not been closed. but the business had not been closed in the system. And so, of course, w- we, we didn't know, and so another one of the recommendations is that the city timely update its system to, to reflect whether a business is active or closed so that it can focus its resources on those active businesses. So, yeah, that, that is an assumption, um, that, that we made. You know, another, uh, piece of information that I'll provide to you, I know that the city manager's office provided a report for the number of delinquencies that they had calculated. Those are different than ours for a couple of reasons. One is we looked at a seven-year period. The period of time that the city manager's office looked at was smaller than that. And then also, we looked at delinquent licenses, and I believe they looked at delinquent businesses. So a particular business, if they're delinquent in nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, those are three licenses, one business. So I, I wanted to make that point earlier and, and forgot.
Okay. Okay, uh, Counselor Kogle?
Can you just clarify for people who are watching what, um, you mean by unbanked and unworked versus unprocessed and uncollected slash delinquent? So that we're all speaking the same language, because some of this, half of it says that we don't have any unbanked or unworked, but then at the same time, we're saying that we have twenty to twenty-six million dollars not in delinquent or uncollected. So can you clarify that for people watching?
So the unbanked, unworked terms were what the internal auditor used. And so we took those to mean payment had been received, but that payment had not been put into a bank, and a business license had not been issued from that payment. So, so that is what the internal auditor's report, um, reflected. That's what we went back and confirmed that checks had been deposited and that licenses had been issued. What we looked at in the primary portion of our investigation is what, how, how many businesses are out there that need a license but never paid for one? And so, again, so we call that backlog. That's money that is due to the city but has not been received and is just sitting in a drawer at the city. That is, again, I think of it in terms of what a business's account receivable would be. My customers owe me this money. I have a valid claim for it. I need to go out and work and collect it. So that's what, that's what we looked at.
So did, did you clear, did you clarify that and, and work that out with the internal auditor on what unbanked and unworked meant from her report before making your report?
I had conversations with the internal auditor, yes.
Do you know, was staff, management, us, CCG aware of all the backlog that we've been experiencing since two thousand sixteen?
I don't believe, well, n- n- no. The, um, city management, um, was unaware of the level of backlog that existed prior to, uh, the public reports that came out in our engagement in September of twenty-three.
And then, um, there's just some rumors flying around about, um, did Trentman and Pepper authorize any shredding or d- uh, destroying of any documents?
No, to the contrary, as soon as we got involved, we issued what's called a litigation hold. In other words, a preservation of documents notice to any individual who would have access to any of the documents that we needed in order to conduct our investigation, that hold remains uh, in place. And so certainly, it would be contrary, a- and in violation of that hold to shred relevant documents.
Thanks.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I'm gonna, I got a few questions, but I'm gonna kind of, one of my questions was along the lines of what Counselor Kogle just stated, but I'm, I'm gonna ask the finance director, deputy city manager to, to, uh, Hodge to come up here for a minute? Please?
Yes, yeah, they'll.
Ms. Peeler, you can stay too. And I, I'm gonna ask y'all some questions, and I'm doing it for a purpose and a reason, because I think it's relevant and really important to everything that's going on here. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts. From day one, when we started this audit and shined a light on the department, that basically we found out that there was an extreme amount of mismanagement. I use the word gross negligence. I think if you sum up everything that's in these reports, whether it's a lack of control, reporting, uh, policies and procedures, training, I mean, failure of the collections for whatever reason that led to the negligence and the snowballing of the amount of the uncollections, I think at the end of the day, that term is appropriate by definition. Would that be right? Am I accurate in saying that, Mr. Peeler? And what you've seen and experienced?
Yes, there's a, there are several factors that created, that contributed to the backlog, including some of them.
I'm, I'm gonna ask this question, yeah, so yes or no question, but are, are you aware of, are you aware, Deputy City Manager Hodge? Are you aware, or did any approvals given to shred documents, to destroy documents, or to take documents off the property?
It depends on which documents you're referencing.
Any documents out of the revenue department?
There were some checks that were recently shredded, but there is an explanation for that, and we're, we're happy to provide that explanation.
I've seen that in the report. I've seen that in the report. Madam Finance Director, are you aware? Hold on, Ms. City Manager, I, I know where I'm going with this.
Wait, 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 wait just a second, just a second. Yeah, and, and you, you give her an opportunity to answer the question.
She's okay, I'm okay with it.
Well, but she still has some additional information.
I think we need to explain the checks that I think everyone seems to be referencing. And that's because we changed, and I'll let the finance director add in information. The lockbox from Sanovis was changed from a local lockbox to one out of state. They changed the process where they started sending us, Sanovis changed the process, so when they started returning the, the tax returns to us for processing, where they had deposited the funds in the lockbox, they were returning those physical checks to us that had already been deposited. Those checks should not have been returned to us, and so those checks were shredded. Those were in the bank, deposited through the lockbox, out of state. Since yesterday, the finance director has met with Sanovis, and that process is being changed. That has never been the process with Sanovis to return deposited checks to us until this changed from a local lockbox to an out-of-state lockbox. So, yes, those checks were shredded.
Thank you. That's, uh, that's not what I'm looking for, but I appreciate the information, but any, any, any destruction of documents or documents being carried off the property? Since the audit has been going, okay.
Out of the revenue division? No, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you. And the finance director, are you aware of any documents that have been destroyed or been authorized to be destroyed? Own property, shredded, taken off the property and, or destroyed?
No.
Okay, thank you. The city manager, are you aware, did you give authority, or are you authorized, or you know of any shredding of documents? Destruction of documents or documents taken off the property?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peeler, are you aware of any documents that's been shredded, that's been destroyed, or taken off the property?
I'm not. Like I said, we put a preservation notice in effect at the beginning of the investigation.
The reason I ask those questions, because, you know, it's important for our citizens to understand how this all started. We, this council, when we started this audit, it started with concerns about the fire and EMS collections on the EMS, on the ambulance collections. That's how it started. But then when the door was open to the department, there were things that were discovered that were way off the chart, that just was not a good sign. Mr. Peeler, I think you have stated, when you walked in the office with your people, you saw the same thing. You saw things that was just not in place and not right about the department, the revenue department. I think you said the same thing. These whistleblowers said that documents, why, an audit was being, uh, initiated, that documents were being destroyed, that documents were being taken off the property and shredded. We've got photographs of checks, documents, just disarray in the office, totally unorganized, and checks that go all the way back, I've got one for twenty twenty, twenty oh five. But they, they go all the way up. I can keep naming them if you want me to, but I've got photographs. We've got photographs of those things. We've got it. Con, we've, we've got concerns about statements that were made, and all those can be substantiated by affidavit if necessary, okay? Now, I don't want to go there, but what, what I'm getting at is we started this investigation, we initiated investigation because we heard about these things that brought grave concern. Out of a department, there's a lot of revenue that goes through there. Checks, cash, credit cards, all kinds of revenue that's flowing through there from all various parts of our government. So first thing that comes to your mind, uh-oh, we just dealt with a matter in Superior Court. We need to look into this, and we need help. And that's how, Mr. Peeler, you got where you're at today and working on this matter. That's okay, because the good thing about it is that the light was shone on it. We understand it. It's, there's a lot of work to be done. It's not a pretty picture. It's critical. I mean, when I read this report, it's critical. There's a lot of work needs to be done, and that's what we need to focus on. We don't need to focus on these things of the past. But, and, and y'all can, I'm, I'm okay. Y'all can sit down now.
And I think she wants to give her report at some point.
Yeah, they're, they're coming back.
Let me finish, and then you can, you will have your time. But thank you for working with me.
And, and Mayor, you know, I, I just want to say for the record, I'd love to have affidavits and to do, you know, Ms. Peeler has been paid or will be paid in excess of four hundred thousand dollars. And, um, for this report. And, uh, I, you know, I, I believe in transparency. Let's do the affidavits, let's subpoena text messages, email messages. Let's do the whole thing and get it right. Uh, that's where I am, Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Davis, you gonna continue?
I am gonna continue. I, uh, the city manager, I mentioned. Ms. City Manager, I, I appreciate your comments, but you know, we've been having to clean up a lot of things. It's costing a lot of money. And that's okay, because we understand it and we're gonna get it right. And you're part of the picture, you're part of the equation, okay? And a lot of this stuff is, is said that you, your finance department was unaware of it. They were unaware of it and didn't know about it, and that's how it got out of control. It snowballed to the point where it got out of control. Yes, we had to pay a lot of money to clean it up, and I don't mind doing that. Because we are now collecting money, we know what the problem is, and we understand it, and we can move forward. We've got to get an action plan in place, and you are very, very important to that. All right? And I don't want to get bogged down on that, but when I'm, I'm gonna go back, Mr. Peeler, to the forty-five point one. And it seems to me, and I've said it from here, I'm not talking about money that's been banked, that's in the budgets. I've said it many, many times. It's not in the budget, that's in an account somewhere, whether it's restricted or not, whether it's been spent in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, but I know that this thing has snowballed all the way to the point where we're at. And I know there's a lot of uncollected revenue. I've said that. I've said it from day one. That's what I'm talking about. Uncollected, unworked, unprocessed. Now, we asked you to go back beyond COVID to take a look at things, and you did. And there seemed to be a pattern. There seemed to be a pattern, but COVID seemed to be the best year of collection out of this whole thing. And then it continued to get worse and worse till last year was really bad. Now, I'm, I imagine those percentages have changed, but I want the citizens to know that the PowerPoint tonight's a PowerPoint, but the, the real details of the documents is another, uh, version that you put together that really goes into detail and explains it and talks about it. When you got checks going way back, when you got statutes of limitations that was talked about, where time has eliminated any opportunity to collect, those are losses. You've got accounts that have been closed even today. We don't even know which businesses, some of the businesses that are open and are not based on the reports. You've got companies that have gone bankrupt, where we've got checks in the revenue department, still there, documentation of that that never got cashed. So you've got a lot of stuff floating around that never made it to the bank, which tells me that that, there is revenue that has been unworked and unprocessed over the course of years, maybe not in the timeframe that we're talking about, but it goes back and can be substantiated all the way back into probably the early two thousands or late two thousands, like two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. If you really looked at the big picture on this thing. So even though we're talking about this small twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and these amount of numbers, it's not like it just happened. There's a pattern that it's been going on for a while, and it's gone unnoticed. And, yes, there can be revenue out there that's already, you'll never collect that. So would that be defined as missing revenue? Would that be defined as unworked? You'll never get it back. We just changed the year, twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, it's gone. You can't get that money back. It's gone. That's missing. It'll always be missing. Okay, so when you talk about the checks that match up for the forty forty-five, I mean, you got to go back and start looking at all this. There are some examples. That's why I said, there are some examples of things that have happened in this office. The comments, the allegations, call them what you want to, but the things that happened that led to this investigation, that led to the audit. Okay, and I want people to understand that. So I don't want to get caught up in the, the word salads of the accounting terms that are being used, but there's money out there that we failed to collect, and we're collecting. I think we're collecting a lot of money, been collecting a lot of money, and we still need to do that. But we got to get that fixed for, I've always said for twenty twenty-four, we got to get it, we got to get it fixed and get on track. We need that action plan. We need to see it, and we should be focusing on the, the findings are there, and the findings, when I look at the findings, they mirror the internal auditor's office and your investigation, a lot of it mirrors. Except for we've got hung up on that little forty-five point one, and I just got notice of that today at two o'clock. I didn't even know you were looking into that, to be honest with you. I guess the mayor, it was said that the mayor asked you to do it, but it was unbeknownst to council, and we just got wind of this. So I would ask you, do you have the supporting documents to validate that, all the information the, that was given to you, or whatever they got, that, that goes through the confirmation process to reconciliation? I would think. I would like to have that information, and it's probably appropriate that the audit committee has that. We've got some very smart people on that audit committee. And they need to take a look at it, and they need to dissect it and understand it. I mean, because we're all talking different things, different language. Counselor Begley may be in one area, I'm in another area on the, on the collection side. But you did in your report tonight say, I wanted to ask you, I still have, I've been going off of the, you know, we, we've taken some time during the holidays. This report was ready, but it was delayed. Then it was delayed last week, and now here we are today, our last council meeting. But in the December final confidential draft that was given to us, and we knew about a lot of this stuff before, you know, before the audit came up, we knew what was going on. We just couldn't say a whole lot because the investigation was still going on. But you, you reported in December, for active and closed delinquent businesses is approximately twenty-two point eight, twenty-three to thirty-one, thirty-two. thirty-two. Okay? That's what you reported here, using the actual, average actual gross receipts and average estimated cost methods. But this report today that we just got on the presentation is, you've narrowed it down to twenty million and, and twenty-six, twenty-seven million. I mean, how did those numbers change? Is it just since we initiated the audit, the collections that have gone on that kind of subtract from that amount, or how did that number change?
I, I don't know, because I'm, I don't know exactly what you're referring to in the, in the first draft. I can tell you that at the end of the report are schedules that have revenue collected, um, you know, revenue outstanding that is owed but has not been collected. There's sched, there's detailed schedules for each year. And so I, I'll just have to ask to get, be able to go back and look at that, and I can get you an answer. But those have, those have not changed since.
Okay, it's the same. I mean, it's, you're stating the same thing. It's just the numbers have changed since the December fifth report, and they, they're lower now. I mean, I'm, that's my question, is why are they lower? Is there a reason? Is there, what happened to, to lower those numbers?
No, we have not updated the math since then, but if you could tell me what page you're on.
I'll give it to you here.
Okay, yeah.
It basically says the same thing, but the numbers have changed.
Right.
I just want to know what happened during the last, I guess it would be a month?
Yeah, I don't know. I know, in the, in the line above where it says, um, if business licenses for active delinquent businesses had been timely renewed, the current estimated value of the total revenue the city should have collected is between twenty and twenty-six million dollars. So that's what we had reported earlier. And then, um, I think we, I think that those numbers at the bottom add, if business licenses for now closed delinquent businesses had been timely renewed, the current, the current estimated value of the total revenue of cities should have been collected was approximately two point seven to four point eight. So I think that, just for the PowerPoint, I broke out active businesses only, because we assumed that these closed businesses, that's, that's gone. Like, that's not going to be collected. So I think that's the distinction. Does that make sense to you?
Well, and that's what we're saying, is just missed opportunities. We're all saying the same thing, and, you know, in my world, it's AR, accounts receivable, and just, you failed to collect it. That's money out there. You just, you don't have in the bank, and you, you haven't collected it for whatever reasons. And I think your report gives all those reasons a myriad. I'm not going to go over them, and, and anybody can read through the report, and I think they can, they can understand. It's a very good, detailed report. Um, you, you did say that you got the information to validate the, uh, I mean, there were some pretty substantial claims today, and I know there seems to be a, you know, a, uh, I guess plenty of incentive to just to keep moving along and maybe just kind of, you know, push things under the rug, but I'm afraid that's not going to happen. There's going to be a lot of work that still needs to be done. Do you have those document, the supporting documents to what you spoke of today at the end of your presentation on the forty-five point one?
Right, so we took a hundred, a, a random sample of a hundred and two, and we have canceled checks, deposit tickets, and, um, issued licenses, or, 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 or a letter to the business stating there's a problem. So not, not, there was a, a couple of them, if I remember correctly, where there's a problem letter, not a business license, but, right. And that was, again, that's for the hundred and two random sample.
And you can get those to us, right?
Sure.
But I'm sure there's going to be, Counselor Begley, am I right? You're gonna have some people ask some pretty pointed questions, and, and I think probably they're going to want to validate all this. Uh, those people are, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna want to see the information before they make determinations, because I think you would agree, and if you talk to some of these people, I mean, there's a vast realm of what ifs or things that could happen during these, during these audits, and they all need to be brought together. I think the same thing i- is to be said, and I go back, Mayor, and I'm almost finished. The, I really, Ms. City Manager, I, I want to, you know, I said a long time ago, um, I'm not looking to point the finger at anybody. We just got to get an area that's not working right. You know, there's been failure. I mean, hey, call it what it is. We got to get beyond that, and, and we got to figure out those recommendations that we pay good money to get recommendations, not just with the investigative firm, but our internal auditor. They mirror each other. They mirror each other. And we need that action plan, and we need to understand it. One of the things I wanted to ask tonight is, have we already initiated the renewals, sending out the renewals to all the businesses, which I think is about nine thousand plus accounts? Is that, I mean, I mean, that would be a question that I have.
Uh, Mayor, we have, and I do look forward to the deputy city manager of finance and the finance director responding. Um, and, 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 uh, Counselor, you, you were right about internal audits. I, you know, I, I just Googled and just made a note, uh, the objective. And, um, and I think out of this, um, it, it fits with what I Googled. It says, help define areas where the department agency can improve while also providing information it needs to improve. Objectively evaluate risk, analyze and assess processes and systems for efficiencies, doing spot checks for as yet known issues. Uh, and so it's my hope, much like yours, that, uh, that internal audits going forward, um, will be viewed and applied, uh, as described when I Googled this, so that we will continue to make government operations better. That, that is my hope.
I'm on the same page with you there. It's continuous improvement. Um, whatever you need. Okay? Look, I know there's some challenges in the department, and I know, I think some people have retired. I think spots, people have moved on, which adds to more challenges. But whatever you need, if you need some, a third-party entity to come in and fill the gaps and know how to do this kind of stuff to help, if you need a third-party business entity to come in and help take things over to get it where it needs to be, a- and, and in this report, one more thing. There's an old saying that you got to put the squirrels in the trees and the fish in the sea. And what I'm seeing here is the squirrels in the sea and the fish in the trees. So you got to get the right people in there. And it may be tough. You may have to make some changes. You may have to make some changes, but that's your job, Ms. City Manager.
Absolutely.
And that's part of continuous improvement.
Absolutely.
But there's failures, and you know that. But we got to focus on how we get to the next step.
Absolutely.
For the sake of the citizens. That's what they're expecting. They don't want us to get caught in the weeds and all this. But we're about over with that, but there's still work to be done. And Mr. Pillar, Mayor, the City Manager, at some point, I would think that we got to come back and do a follow-up compliance to understand, you know, where we're at. I understand there's progress that's been made in that department. I think that, Ms. City Manager, you probably lit a fire under somebody, and the, the collections has been, you know, accelerated, and you've taken a lot of resources and dedicated in that area to go out and, and collect and make sure that it's collected. Now, I don't know what that number is, but certainly it starts subtracting from the millions that we're talking about. It does over time. And I don't know if there's some of this stuff we'll ever be able to recover with statute of limitations. That's, you know, some things I want to talk to the external auditor about. What do we do there from that standpoint, and how do we record that? Um.
And, and Mayor, if I may, uh, in terms of statute of limitation, of course, and, and I know the finance director or deputy city manager for finance sent something to the city attorney. And, and Mr. Pillar, you may know, but our research, uh, shows that, uh, for taxes owed, taxes, there is no statute of limitation. And, um, now, that's what our research shows. But of course, you may, and, and, and I've, I've mentioned that maybe, Ms. City Attorney, you received, uh, an email a couple of days ago, uh, asking about that. And I suggest that you contact legal counsel for GMA and ACCG, because that's what our research shows. And so as Mr. Pillar has said, um, there, there's money that's owed the city. And Counselor Davis, you are correct. We intend to go get the money, and we're out there getting that money that's owed. Uh, I don't know why it went back to twenty sixteen, but certainly, um, the courtesy of delinquent notices were sent out, and they were worked twenty sixteen through nineteen. Delinquent courtesy notices did not go out during the pandemic, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and they did go out for those years, those years collectively in twenty twenty-three, September, as you noted. But what we show is that taxes owed, there is no, no statute of limitation. Please, lawyers, correct me if we wrong.
About the appeal different.
Sure.
And that's not correct for city, uh, taxes. It is correct for state taxes. The state can go back, uh, anytime when there's fraud suspected, uh, or a report has been filed, the state for, uh, taxes imposed under state law, such as property tax, they can go back further than the general rule of three years. These are city license fees we're talking about here. The general rule is that on an open account, the statute of limitations is four years. If there's been fraud, the city may be able to go back further than four years.
Well, and, and I will say.
That's where we are.
Mayor, a- again, I don't know why Mr. Pillar went back to twenty sixteen. Um, delinquent courtesy notices were sent out for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. They were worked, just like they're supposed to work. And so when, yeah, in October, when the finance director, the city manager brought them forward, our focus is twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, all within statute of limitation. All within statute of limitation when we sent them out in twenty twenty-three, September. For twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, all within statute of limitation when we sent them out in twenty twenty-three, September. For twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, all within statute of limitation. Is that correct, Ms. Pillar?
Uh, yeah, my understanding is the delinquent notices went out in September of twenty-three that incorporated the years where they had not. I guess I just want to make clear the reason we went back to sixteen was in conducting our investigation. We wanted to look at pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. We also wanted to, we had to stay within the city's document retention policy, so the documents would be there. You know, we did find, of course, that there was backlog in those pre-pandemic years of sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Yeah, and if you go back beyond that, you'll probably find the same thing, no doubt. But again, those were worked, like they were supposed to work.
I want to finish.
And, uh, the process worked. The process did not work starting in twenty twenty during the pandemic. That's when the process did not work.
And we, and we'll get to that, I think.
Well, let me, let me finish up, and then, um, Mayor, if you would.
Hang on, I am. But I was just gonna say, we can get most of that out on the next one.
Thank you, Mayor.
Continue.
Um, Ms. City Manager, like I said, there's a pattern. There was a pattern. We established that. We wanted to go back before COVID and after COVID, because that was used as a, a lot of people were using COVID, you know, and where we're at today. But the thing that, that really struck the nerve was that it continued to snowball into this past year, which there was almost a seventy-eight percent lack of collection based on the report. I think it's seventy-eight percent, or it might have been forty-four percent. Was it forty-four? Anyway.
It's alcohol in business was.
And that number's changed, because they've been out working and, and doing a good job. I, I talked about maybe having that. We do need to do a follow-up compliance, whether it's with our internal auditor or with, council's gonna have to, you know, determine if we need to bring, uh, our, uh, investigative arm back to relook at it in a few months, just to measure, to see where we're at, if we're making progress. I think that's going to be real important. For the record, and I finished, for the record, I just want to say that the investigative report that we got here today only pertains to business and alcohol license, only. That's what we're talking about. Those numbers that we're talking about here, whether it's the twenty-six million or the third, twenty, uh, two, twenty-three million, thirty-two million, that pertains to business license and alcohol. The internal auditor went across the board to all hotel motel tax, excise, all, there's all different kind, revenue streams that in one's mind would tell you it takes it beyond that if the pattern is consistent. We just, it would cost this city a lot of money to have this firm and the, uh, support that they had to do it all, and to look at every account and to go back. We could not afford that. Of course, you told us that. But we were able to do a sample in that area to determine where we're at today, and it's, it's a good thing. The citizens can be grateful that, that's what an audit, that's what an auditing department and a compliance department does for you. It shines a light on areas, and we just happened to found something that none of us, none of us knew it was, it was happening, but it was. And, uh, we're gonna fix it, and we're gonna move forward, and it's gonna be better for the citizens of Columbus. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you. I just wanted to read this into the record, because it's on, it's in the original draft, the December fifth draft on page four, and it's in this draft that we received today. And it says, combined the potential revenue, if collected, for active and closed delinquent business licenses is approximately twenty-two thousand, I mean, twenty-two million, eight hundred and forty-six thousand, and thirty-one million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, using the average actual gross receipts and average estimated cost methods respectively.
Okay. All right. Um, and I know we've got, Mr. Pillar, I think that's all the questions.
Okay, thank, thank you.
But thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And I, and I'll make a, a quick comment, too, I, because it's been mentioned that I've asked for Mr. Pillar to look into this, and I did. I approached city attorney about contacting Mr. Pillar, and that was based on an assumption I made, that, that the citizens deserve to know the truth, uh, whether we like it or not, but they deserve to know the truth. So when, um, when we asked the, we did ask the internal auditor to take a look at all the information that was made available. I think Counselor Tucker was there. We promised all that would be available, and then three weeks later, we hadn't heard anything. I knew we had to get something either to refute or to validate. So I appreciate Mr. Pillar taking that on, uh, on such short notice, because I, I do think it was critically important that council have the facts and that the citizens know what was going on. So anyway, that's, that's why I asked them to participate, because I, I assumed that the council would want to, want to do that. Counselor Tucker?
Um, yes, I wanted to ask Mr. Charlie Pillar one final question. Thank you. This was actually a lot. We've been through a lot these last, um, months, past months. One of the question that I have received from constituents is, who is ultimately responsible for, because you, you made the comment. You said that it was failure at all levels of management. And I, and when you say all levels, I think, to clarify what that means, when you say all levels of management, to clarify from the lowest level to the top, like clarify what you mean by all levels of management.
I, I think that in the city's org chart, that the revenue division flows up through the city manager's office, and it, n- numbers that are in the tens of millions of dollars, um, it should have been detected earlier. It should have been reported earlier, and it should have been fixed earlier. It should have been reported earlier and it should have been fixed earlier.
And when you say earlier, are you like 2022, 2021, 2020 earlier or 2011?
Well, I, we only went back to 2016 because that was the data that was available to us. But certainly at the end of each license cycle, there should be a report that says, here's what we collected. Here's the license we've issued. And then here are the ones that are, are going to be late. And here are the ones that are delinquent. And here's the plan for working those late renewals and those delinquencies. So that each year it can be detected and, and can be raised up the chain of command if, if necessary. And then that way it prevents this snowballing that we have seen, you know, really take off in 2021, 22.
So basically, your, I'm gonna say audit scope, 2026 up until now. So between 2026 and up until now, this information should have actually been determined that we had backlogs. Because the one thing is, when did the backlog start? You know, just to kind of cover that, did it start in 2026 or did it start in 2019?
So there, there are percentages of late and delinquent renewals in 2016 where we started. And then those, those percentages go up over time with the highest in, in 21. But you know, there, there's double-digit percentages of delinquencies in those years. And management above the revenue division was unaware of that. And so one of the recommendations that we have is for a system to be in place that if that happens and you have delinquencies at this double-digit rate and that, you know, uh, equal millions of dollars of taxpayer money, that there's a process to raise that so that higher-level management can take action to keep it from snowballing.
Yeah, so who, who would be ultimately responsible as a council? Because I know it's gonna be conversation of what's next. So who's ultimately responsible for the failure of the revenue?
So there's a number of contributing factors. The personnel that currently oversees, um, you know, that currently manages license application renewal forms, receiving those forms when they come back, managing deposits, issuing licenses, reporting up through the finance director to the assistant city manager to the city manager. There needs to be policies in place where there are reporting requirements to prevent this snowballing. In other words, e- early detect, this is not a problem that can't be fixed if detected early. If not detected early, then it becomes an issue where significant revenue is at risk.
So do you feel like the policies and procedures should have been created at the council level? Or the revenue finance department level? And the reason why I'm asking that, do you feel like city council is responsible for this action right now? Do you feel like this is a city council? Actual responsibility, meaning the, the, the backlog worked?
I think city council was responsible in that when it learned of this through public reporting, it took action to identify what the scope of the backlog is, how much there is in backlog and how much that backlog caused.
So you're saying city council took appropriate steps to actually identify the problem and actually reach out to you, come up with some recommendations and hopefully we will get the solutions. You feel like city council did the right thing by conducting this investigation?
I do, I do. I think that it has, um, you know, hopefully for the, for the betterment of Columbus, it has identified some deficiencies in the revenue department that can be fixed. It identifies some money that's owed that can go be collected. And it has identified a path forward to maximize the, you know, appropriate revenue for the city, which I think is what your, the council's goal would be.
Thank you, Mr. Pillar.
Councilor Begley?
Sorry, uh, Councilor Tucker reminded me of another question I wanted to ask. So from an external auditor perspective. I was trying to figure out like how they would have caught this. And so they, they test AR, but this really wouldn't show up in AR yet because there's not an invoice, right? There's just a notice to renew. And they really look at revenue thresholds, you know, is it growing year over year as you would expect? And they, they check that piece. And, um, and they do the, the cash reconciliation. So anything that shows up in revenue, they make sure that was the cash deposited. So th- this was kind of a weird one because it, it really was more of an operational piece where we weren't collecting. And so it actually wasn't in the accounting system yet. Is this something that you would have expected an external auditor to test or look into? Because it, it, from their perspective, it felt like it was out of their scope to check. And, and so does that seem consistent with how you've seen other external auditors? Or have you seen external auditors take that extra step and kind of review this operational process in more detail?
So I'm, I'm not a CPA, um, you know, and so I'm a little reluctant to get into that and say what they should have done and what they should not have done. I, I would make a recommendation that this report be disclosed to them.
It has.
So that they can continue to look at their processes and make any changes they deem appropriate in order to, you know, catch issues like this.
Okay, because it, it was a weird one that was like, this isn't really reflected in the, in the financial statements. And so it's, where would this have been caught in a normal review? And so I, I think I was struggling trying to identify what, where should have been caught other than just having better controls and procedures in place to make sure that we do it correctly.
Right, controls, procedures, and then reporting requirements that flag early on significant, you know, AR, outstanding AR collections issue.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Davis?
Two things. Tell me in your mind, what, what is the lockbox two in the revenue department? What is that?
Uh, the, so the lockbox, there's two things that are referred to as the lockbox, which can be a little confusing. Sanovis operates, operates a lockbox service for the city. Where checks go there, those checks are scanned, those checks are logged, those checks are deposited. And then that information is relayed to the city. There's something called a lockbox spreadsheet, which is maintained outside, outside of the software system that processes the business licenses. And it is a spreadsheet that has been developed by the revenue division to track business accounts, when payments come in, when business licenses issued and dates. And so when transactions are worked, they go on this lockbox spreadsheet. And then ultimately, the receipts from that go into the cashiering system, which is a, a part of the city government's kind of overall system.
I think it was talked about like a, it was seen, and you even talked about it, baskets of checks, files, account, all kinds of stuff going into baskets and just sitting there from several years that was identified. Is that, that's not the lockbox action that you goes in and out of some kind of a vault? I, I haven't seen it in what it, what it's like actually in the revenue department.
Right, so the, so lockbox is, it's not a, a box, it's an act, it's a spreadsheet. Um, the, the mail is there, there were, and we report this. There were, you know, a thousand pieces of returned and unopened mail spanning several years that we found in the revenue division. And so the reason that that is significant is that frequently, not every time, those were either business renewal applications that went out and were returned, or they may have been problem letters that went out and were returned. And so what that return should indicate is, hey, I need to go check and see, is this business still open or is it closed? Does this person, have they relocated? Has there been a change of ownership? And then look deeper into whether that person, you know, still owes money and is required to get a business license or whether they have closed or, or, you know, gone out of business such that they don't. But that didn't happen. And so that is what I think has contributed significantly to this issue of the city not knowing whether businesses are opened or closed and whether they owe occupation tax.
Well, and one other thing about security. We found out during this process that conveniently the camera system was down for several months. So you didn't know what was happening in this building. It was basically the camera system did not work nor the recording system. I think going forward, Mr. Mayor, the city manager is part of the action plan. And I would recommend it and approve whatever the funds needed. But we need to have cameras in the revenue department. We need to have cameras anywhere money is being changed or money is being processed. It's just the right thing to do. I think there would have been an opportunity there to maybe understand the situation we're in a little bit better, a lot sooner. If we had cam, there's no cameras in that office at all. And we need them. They need to be in there. And I don't know if that department is moving, the revenue department is moving. And it's going over to the city hall, but if it is, we need cameras. And I, I think you would want them. I think we would all want them and it's gonna help as we move forward into the future. Hopefully that's part of the action plan and I think it's the right thing to do. The, um.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right. The city manager? We've got, we've got the finance.
Mayor, Deputy City Manager, um, over finance, Pam Hodge is going to speak. And then the finance director is going to, um, provide a response to, uh, Mr. Pillar's investigative report. And, and let me just take the opportunity to, Mr. Pillar, to thank you for your work, um, for what you've done.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Deputy City Manager, Hodge.
So, good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, um, city attorney. I would like to thank the city manager and the mayor for allowing me the opportunity to make a few comments in response to this audit investigation of the finance department. And first, again, I want to comment on the $45.1 million. What I have passed out to you is a summary. This is the internal auditor's report that she provided on December 5th. I've given you the summary of this whole back section. This whole back section is a copy of the lockbox spreadsheet. And the 102 transactions that he referenced is 102 of these transactions of the 10,000. We can produce documentation for every single check. So it's very frustrating to, to hear some of the comments that's being made about this. The internal auditor is the one who labeled this as missing money, as you can see in the charts that I've handed out. I passed out this section that she presented on December the 5th. This was not validated by the internal auditor before presenting this information to city council and the public. And even after that date, we provided extensive documentation to her, access to the information. There has been no response from the internal auditor. Thus, Mr. Pillar came in and I'm happy and glad to hear that he has validated this information. But there still is some reluctance of council to accept that, which is very frustrating. And it's really unfortunate that the taxpayers had to pay money to confirm what the finance director and what I have been stating. Every penny of that $45.1 million is in the bank. It has been said not to discredit the internal auditor, but it seems okay to discredit myself, the finance director and the staff. We are honest people with high integrity. And it is very disappointing that I feel the attack on myself and the finance director. And now we have a report that's presented that I feel is an inaccurate impact of the delinquent accounts. This narrative continues with assumptions and estimates of the business license issues. This report provided today gives the impression that there's a definite conclusion to the dollar value and the financial impact. There is no conclusion to this report. And the recommendations align with the action plan that the finance director presented on October 31st. And this costs the taxpayer somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000. The work performed is only the initial step to identify and validate delinquent accounts. It should definitely not have been the one and only step performed. The other steps were not performed to review each account and determine why it was not renewed and if it should have even been renewed. But to automatically assume that a business should have renewed their license is completely unrealistic. This is especially an outrageous assumption if you're planning to present a financial impact. So now we have this number floating around out there of the financial impact. There are examples of why this assumption does not make sense. There are individuals who have passed away that's on this list. Naming former mayor Bob Portishead is on this list. He has passed away. He is not going to renew his license. Former Recorders Court Judge Mary Buckner again has passed away. There are companies that have closed and left Columbus that we are all aware of. NCR, Shrimp Basket, Golden Corral, and others that are being included in this number. Businesses that are located out of Muskogee County are sent a current, a courtesy delinquent letter. Code enforcement does not have jurisdiction to cite an owner for operating without a license if they're located out of Muskogee County. Identifying these types of accounts and removing them from the delinquent list would have been another step in this process. Delinquent licenses for 2017, 18, and 19 were worked by special enforcement. There are notes on the accounts which have already been worked that the business was no longer in operation. This would yet be another step in this process of validation. There are businesses that have been sold and the new owner has a valid license, but the old account does not, did not close. This would again have been another step in the validation process to compare licenses with the same address and review those accounts. Failure of the prior owner to close the account does not result in delinquent accounts for multiple subsequent years. Again, this is providing information without complete validation. As I stated on December 12th, and I will state here again today, there are improvements that need to be made. No one is discounting that. We all recognize that. There were tasks that were not completed. The finance director provided an executive summary on October 23rd outlining those issues and the plan of action to address those issues, which has started. There are delinquent businesses who should have renewed but didn't. We are working those accounts. There are 3,557 businesses who did not renew in 20, 21, 22, and 23. The finance director will provide an update on those accounts and respond to the independent investigation. And at this time, I'll be turning it over to the finance director. But again, happy to answer any questions related to this information.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of council. A couple of things I, um, would like to just make reference of since it's sort of my turn. There were 138 checks that were identified as stale. And 68 of those checks have been replaced. So nearly half of the checks that were identified as stale have been replaced. Some of those checks did go back to 2003. It's possible that some of those checks that went back to 2003 had been replaced, but unfortunately, they were so old. We had no way of really, um, researching to see if the, the check had actually been replaced. But there was 138, the value of the 138 checks was $218,000. And again, 68 of those checks have been replaced. I just wanted to make reference to that because that is not in this report, but that was something that was mentioned today. Um, also, what's not in the report is, um, the renewal process. We do plan to send out the renewals, um, by the second week in February for the occupation tax. tax licenses. Renewals are done in stages. They're done in phases. The first renewal for the 24-year went out in October. That was for the alcohol licenses. The second phase of the renewals went out early January for the insurance licenses, and that was about five, it was over 500, it was like 505 renewals for insurance license accounts that we sent out in early January. The next phase will be sort of the big bulk of mailing, which is for the occupation tax returns, and that'll, and now those will go out by mid-February, before mid-February. So as stated in the investigative report from Troutman Pepper, there's no evidence of malfeasance. Malfeasance is, by definition, wrongdoing of a public official. And so with that, we'll briefly go over the discussion topics in response to the investigative report, findings and recommendations. We'll talk about where we were, obviously providing a response to the investigative report, where we are, and then what's next. So a quick recap from the executive summary report presented to council on October 31st, discussing where we were. This slide just shows of the 3,557 delinquent accounts turned over to code enforcement, 49 of those were out of county, 448 were pending in the revenue division. There were 113 that were removed from the list because they were either closed or renewed by the revenue division. Code enforcement verified that there were 224 accounts, 224 businesses that had been closed. At that time, they'd issued 117 citations with a balance to be worked of just over 2,100, almost 2,200 accounts. Licenses processed as of that time over, close to 7,900 for 2020, 7,933 for '21, and 7,387 for '22, and 6791 for 2023. So again, as reported in the executive summary report from October 31st, and as referenced by Mr. Peeler, there were contributing factors to the licensing processing backlog. We discussed the extension of the renewal deadlines, how the renewals were extended for 2020, 2021, and '22 from April 1st to June 1st, and then extended again for 2023 from April 1st to May 1st. Those extensions did negatively impact the processing timelines. We also discussed some of the staffing challenges. Those impacted all facets of license, licensing processing, and whether it was due to vacancies or mandated COVID-19 protocols. We were not untouched in the revenue division and in the Finance Department in general from those COVID-19 mandates. We discussed how productivity declined because of the software system performance issues, how processing the license required more steps once we upgraded the system. And then lastly, we discussed how staff failed to follow established protocols by not sending timely courtesy delinquent notices for '21 and '22, which ultimately impacted when the delinquent list was turned over to code enforcement. So it's true, the time period that was referenced in the investigative report was January 1st of 2016 to September 25th of 2023. 60,400 licenses were processed during that time. That represents 15,193 individual business accounts, with 823 of those accounts having alcohol license privileges. The report categorizes 4,056 license renewals as being late, and this represents 2,846 business license accounts. Of the 2,846 businesses, 13% of those accounts are closed, and it's important to point out that these closed, these closed accounts are closed because our current operating procedure is that we don't close an account out in the licensing system until the business has submitted their final tax return to include any final payments due. So if it's closed, there's no additional money that's due because it's been finalized in terms of payment and account status. So it's inaccurate to expect additional payment from a business once the account has been closed in the licensing system. So we know that some businesses, they don't renew each year by the required due date. We know that for a fact. You all know it. But it is inaccurate to assume that a license issuance date after the license year is indicative of a financial loss, especially if that business has paid their taxes on time. City Code doesn't say that a business is late in terms of when the license is actually issued. The penalties are assessed if you fail to pay on time. And so sometimes it takes longer than we like to resolve a problem case, and this resolution may have caused a license to be issued at a later date. Now, if a business fails to pay timely, like I said, the assessment of penalties and interest likely outweighs any estimated time value of money calculations as the late renewal penalty is 10%, and interest accrues at 1.5% each month that it's unpaid. So the report also categorizes over 24,000 license renewals as being delinquent, and this grouping represents 8,771 actual business license accounts. Of those 8,000-plus accounts, 29% are closed. 10% have been renewed. 9% are outside of Muskogee County. 8% were either pending processing or designated as a problem case. This information is as of December the 28th because initially we assumed the report would be provided at the first meeting in January. But again, the process is not to close an account in our system until a final return has been provided and all money is owed or remitted. So again, if the account is closed in our system, there is no additional money due. We've already finalized the account. We've already collected all what's owed to the city. The logic, their logic says that because a license was issued in a given year, then that account is delinquent in each subsequent year until the account is closed in our system. I mean, there are conversations that we had that says where, you know, I tried to express where that was illogical in terms of, you know, how you would come up with the number of license renewals deemed to be delinquent. There are several examples, but I'll share one specific example for Hungry Howie's Pizza on Schaumburg Road. I think maybe two or three businesses have been in that location since they closed, but the business reported to us that they ceased operations in April of 2017. Now, unfortunately, they didn't tell us that they stopped doing business until May of '21. However, with the logic that was used in this analysis that was provided by Troutman and Acutus, they said that Hungry Howie's Pizza was delinquent for '18, '19, '20, and '21. So again, the analysis calculates revenues that are not owed to the city because we closed that account in the system, and they trued up any balances due. So similar to the situation that I described, there may be a time lag between when a business closes the count and when they cease operations. And there are other scenarios where we may have been notified that the business has ceased operation due to the death of an owner, as the Deputy City Manager mentioned, or by code enforcement as part of the annual delinquent process, but we don't close an account in the system until a final return has been filed. And so it's possible. It's possible that for some of these accounts that haven't been closed, we may even owe a refund to the business because of prepayment credits that they may have submitted to us if their tax liability is actually less than the prepayment that they've made to us. So to assume that there is automatic money that's due when in fact the city could owe back money to businesses, I think is very misleading. So the city uses the gross receipts and profitability ratio. This is the methodology that was selected by the city to assess and collect occupation taxes. Since occupation taxes are a derived income tax based on economic activity and earnings of the business, the city cannot accurately determine what the gross receipts would be for a particular business in a preceding year or the ensuing year. And so to make such assumptions would be inaccurate and misleading. Now, there are obviously some reference and some discussion that's been made in terms of not being able to collect on prior years, and Mr. City Attorney, we can go out and get an expert opinion from a tax attorney, but based on the research that we've seen and the information that we've provided from the National Research Legal Group, based on Georgia statute of limitations, OCGA 48-2-49(c) states that in the case of fraud, as the City Attorney mentioned, in the case of fraud, or if the taxpayer fails to file a return, there is no time limit to assess taxes. So with that, there wouldn't be any perceived revenue losses from the statute of limitation in our, according to our research. I mean, it's also inaccurate to, to state and utilize this overly broad approach when assuming that a business will pay the, an equal amount of taxes. All businesses are not created equal. And so we recognize, as the Deputy City Manager mentioned, that businesses that are delinquent, and code enforcement, they are going out and citing those individuals to, those businesses to compel compliance. I mean, but that, that never negates the fact that we may never receive money from some of these defunct businesses like Shrimp Basket. I mean, there's a new restaurant that's in place where that used to be because unlike the IRS, unprofitable businesses, they're not allowed to deduct operating losses. That's not the way that it works here in Georgia. The state dictates what's an allowable deduction, and your operating loss is not an allowable deduction as a business. So if you're not profitable, which is likely the reason why you're going out of business, it's probably unlikely that they're going to pay any additional gross receipt taxes. So, you know, this is actual data that we've compiled and collected from the licensing system. These aren't assumptions. This is actual data from our licensing software system. And based on that data, gross receipts reported for 2016, 61% of businesses reported gross receipts of less than $100,000. As you can also see in the chart, 61% of the businesses make up just 1% of the total value of gross receipts reported, while on the flip side, if you go to the bottom of the chart, less than 1% or 60 accounts. So when you start at the bottom tier, which is greater than $36 million, and back that up two additional tiers, that 60 businesses make up over 36% of the total gross receipts. For 2022, 69% of businesses reported gross receipts of less than $100,000. And again, starting at that bottom tier and backing up two additional tiers, 60 accounts or 60 businesses make up 36, I'm sorry, 53 businesses make up 46% of total gross receipts. So when we drill down even further into the data, of the 61% who reported gross receipts of up to $100,000, 77% or approximately 77% would have a computed tax of less than $321, not the $1,200 or the $1,300 that was provided in the investigative report. Of the 69% of businesses who reported up to $100,000 in gross receipts for '22, approximately 80% would have a computed tax of less than $321. Again, not the $1,200 or the $1,300 provided in the investigative report. Looking at this chart from another angle, majority of the businesses in each tier, they have a tax rate of $1 per thousand to $3.21 per thousand. And so in order to have a computed tax of about $1,200 that was provided in the report, utilizing the $3.21 tax rate, the business would have to have in excess of $350,000 in gross receipts. But as you can see here, if you add up the first tier and the second tier, which goes up to 350, close to 80% of businesses reported less than $350,000 in gross receipts. And so again, why we're really sort of stuck on the $3.21 tax rate is because when you break down the data by the tax rate class, approximately 75% of all businesses have a tax rate of $3.21. So based on that statistical data and our current operating procedures, I don't believe the estimates provided and the analysis are feasible. So to address, you know, some of the information that was discussed in terms of the additional investigation, there were some references made to instances where team members were inaccurately and consistently, I should say, reporting penalties and removing, waiving, I should say, penalties and interest, as well as calling off enforcement. Like I said, to help alleviate some of that confusion, we've designated one person from the occupation tax section to send all enforcement requests to code enforcement once they verify with all team members that enforcement action is required. There have been instances where one team member may be working with an account, and that's unbeknownst to the other person. And so what we don't want to do is send out code enforcement on a business when we have their information, someone in the office has received their information and has been diligently working with the business to bring them into compliance. City Code also dictates the application of penalties and interest, so application really shouldn't be inconsistent. You know, I would need specific examples to further investigate that allegation. And then when we talk about the process of recording ambulance revenue receivables and bad debt, we've discussed that back in October, no, I'm sorry, we discussed that back in December when that was stated in the internal auditor's report. But we've discussed extensively with the external auditors, the recording of ambulance revenue receivables and bad debt, and we've made the appropriate changes a few years ago so that we're not materially misstating any ambulance revenue, those receivables, and we are appropriately recording the bad debt. Also, as previously mentioned, the lockbox process has been discussed with the external auditors. That was one of the recommendations, and the auditors have reaffirmed again that the revenue is being properly recorded as part of the city's fiscal year-end closeout process. um, as part of the city's fiscal year-end closeout process. So now I'll just take a few moments, very briefly, to go over the investigative recommendations, which I feel most are in line with the action plan that was presented back in October. So there was a recommendation to comprehensively review policies. And it is recognized that it, that there is a need to update some established policies and written materials. Uh, for example, there were some changes that were made to the lockbox process internally that we need to document. There are some, um, system changes, um, for the new software system that we need to document for our new team, team members because the ones that have really sort of been in the trenches, that have been here the longest, uh, they were trained on the system when we implemented back in April of twenty twenty-one. And so, um, updating, you know, our, uh, or revising our established procedures, this will be an ongoing process. I mean, um, as part of the operational improvement efforts that we'll, that we'll be making in the revenue division. Um, revenue reporting requirements again have been discussed with the external auditors. And our revenues are being properly recorded in all material aspects in accordance with GAAP, which are generally accepted accounting principles, as well as accounting standards mandated by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Uh, we will continue to evaluate, uh, internal reporting needs that may assist with future informational requests and compliance efforts. One of those things could simply be capturing the data and another, um, as another file type. You know, particularly when we send out the renewal notices, um, this was referenced in December, um, we capture that data in a PDF document as opposed to an Excel document. And so maybe that's, you know, some of the things that we'll look forward to maybe implementing and changing, uh, moving forward. Um, there was a recommendation to increase automa- uh, automation and synchronization of systems. Information technology and finance, we've been working towards automation, I mean, whether you believe it or not, since April of twenty-one. Um, there have been several discussions that occurred with different team members of the IT department over the years. So I was a little disheartened to see that in the report that was provided, it said that finance didn't bring it, uh, software issues um, to the IT department until August of twenty-three because that was just not true. And there's email messages, instant messages that, um, support that we had been discussing these issues with the IT department. So, but nevertheless, be- because of those continued discussions, uh, we did recently implement another system upgrade that happened about a week and a half ago. This upgrade puts us one step closer to realizing automation. Um, and that automation is to not only process business license taxes, but is to process some of those excise taxes, particularly hotel motel taxes, our mixed drinks taxes, and some of the permits that are issued by code and enforcement. Collective plan is to move forward with online processing for taxes, some taxes, um, and permits by the end of the second quarter in twenty twenty-four with the goal of online license renewals before the next occupation tax season. We're not going to make it this year. Like I said, we are planning to have those renewal packets out in the mail by the second week or before, preferably the second week in February. So won't be online renewals for occupation taxes this year. Um, in order to increase, uh, there was a recommendation to increase monitoring and enforcement of late and delinquent licenses. Um, you know, the need for streamlined and consistent communication between finance and code enforcement is recognized. Um, we'll, and we have been throughout this process, providing each other incremental, um, status reports and updates so that we sort of know where we stand in terms of the delinquent accounts that are, um, currently in need of enforcement. Additional processes and procedures are being developed that will hopefully increase enforcement efforts in addition to some restructuring of the revenue division that's being considered. With the recent software system upgrade, again, the plan is to move forward with online renewals um, and some taxes by second quarter in twenty twenty-four and the full renewals in twenty, um, twenty-five. So there was a recommendation that said that increasing attention to employee retention and training, you know, retention issues are throughout the government. I mean, it is hard to find good people. I've said that before. You know, the city implemented a new pay plan in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. And so pay, pay is really still a determining factor when you're talking about talent pool selections. If they can go somewhere else and earn a better living, they will do that as opposed to come into the city. Um, on-the-job or hands-on training, that is still our preferred method, that is the training. Um, there's no classroom that you can go sit in that's going to teach you how to process business licenses for Columbus. Each municipality has its own set of rules, regulations, and laws that is only applicable to that municipality. Now, there are obviously statewide laws that's applicable in terms of how you can assess the occupation tax. But there's things that, you know, may be specific to Muskogee County. Um, and so in terms of how we process licenses, some of the things that we want to see on a license, you know, not all municipalities require that if you have a, um, some kind of state license, that that information shows up on the occupation tax license. But we do that in Columbus. So, um, while all processes are not in written form, there are processes, procedures, and training documents to assist employees in their active learning experience. These documents serve as reference guides. There was a, uh, interaction that I witnessed the other day where someone came in wanting to open up a particular account and I saw the two employees collaborating with each other saying, hey, you know, should it be two dollars and fifty-two cent per, per thousand? Or is it three, three dollars and twenty-one cent per thousand? And the employ- one of the employees said, well, wait a minute, let me get my, my reference guide on that. And they pulled out a quick sheet that had that information, um, on it. So it was, you know, so at any way, at any rate, we'll, I do understand though that there is a need for a sort of formalized, um, written training plan for employees that are new. And that is, um, something that we'll develop, um, here in the upcoming months. Uh, there is a recommendation to comprehensively, comprehensively review and overhaul the handling of mail. And obviously there are standard practices for handling and processing mail, including catalog and return mail. But, and so part of the process for catalog and return mail is when the mail, return mail comes in, they look at the account, they open the account, um, open the mail, look at what's being returned. Sometimes you can look at the packet and know that it's, and know what it is, you know it's a renewal. So they'll go and they'll log on to the intergov, um, the licensing software system and notate under that account that the mail was returned. And then they'll look to see if there's a different address that that mail can be sent to. And then they'll repackage that mail and send it back out. Now that is the process. But because of inconsistent staff, staffing levels and inexperienced staff, that process was set aside to some degree um, as we were more diligent and more focused on handling that face-to-face customer and processing these renewals. So with sufficient staffing, obviously more attention can be devoted to handling catalog and the mail. Uh, reinforcement of existing policies will also be monitored on a continuous basis to ensure compliance. Uh, one of the things that I mentioned to the team when they were here was that I don't understand why we have two addresses on our renewal form. That just didn't make sense to me. And it didn't dawn on me before that we had two addresses listed on the renewal form. I mean, I just never really paid it much attention until, until now. And so what we've done, um, when we had to make the change to the out-of-state lockbox was update those forms so that it's consistently one address. So we don't have a situation where people are sending mail directly to us as opposed to the lockbox for processing. So there was a recommendation to increase payment tracking controls and separation of duties. You know, again, we'll evaluate, um, we'll continue to evaluate internal control, uh, reporting needs that may help us in the future for informational requests that may be requested by the city manager, the council, um, as well as, uh, compliance efforts. And so, uh, but unfortunately, it's not feasible to fully segregate all cash-related duties since employees who process licenses also accept payments. That's just unavoidable. Used to be, very long time ago, when the revenue division was at the government center, there was, and when the processes were, um, much more simplistic, I should say, there was one side of the office that did process the licenses and another side that accepted payments. But when the decision was made to move the revenue division from the treasury function, we had to be, create controls or build in redundancies into some of the, our daily protocols that would minimize the risk of mishandling money. And so there is, um, a safe, we refer to it as a vault, but it's really a safe, um, that only a few designated employees have access to. Our entire area is secured. We have to swipe to get back into our area or unless someone lets you in. And the vault is locked throughout the day, the safe is locked. And again, only a few employees have the code to get into the safe. So just a quick recap, um, this is an updated recap from the executive summary report that was provided back in October. So as of yesterday, of the delinquent, the three thousand five hundred fifty-seven delinquent accounts, uh, we have about a hundred and eighty-one that are pending processing in the revenue division. About a hundred and eleven of those are problem cases. Well, we sent out a problem letter to the business saying, for whatever reason, we can't renew your account. Um, there are, um, fourteen hundred and twenty-nine, um, accounts or cases, I should say, that have been closed or renewed or the code enforcement officer has verified that that it, that business no longer exists at that location. Um, this does still include though the four hundred and fifty-nine out-of-county um, licenses in which code enforcement has no oversight or jurisdiction to, um, enforce. So that leaves a balance right now of about fifteen hundred and seventy-one, um, accounts with, um, actively, uh, pending si- warning citations of about three hundred and seventy-six. This is where the officer has gone out to the business and issued them a warning citation to come into compliance. If you have more, want more information specifically about that, our code enforcement director can answer those questions. And so as far as active licenses that we've processed to date, those numbers, as you can see, have increased over the, uh, for these applicable years, particularly for those people that, um, were delinquent for mo- for multiple years that have come into compliance. And so as of right now, as of yesterday, for twenty twenty-three, we have about seven thousand four hundred and ninety-eight licenses that we've issued. So what we're going to do moving forward, you know, obviously the finance department will continue to process pending license renewals. Um, code enforcement, you know, they've been authorized to work overtime and they're going to work that delinquent list for non-compliance. Now, the city manager authorized temporary staff in the, in, uh, in March, really, March of twenty twenty-three, when we, um, when it was discovered that we were going to potentially, um, um, need some assistance in process and performing some simple routine tasks like answering the phone and filing. Um, revenue division management came to me and said, hey, we need some temporary help. So I requested of the city manager in March, some temporary employees. Um, the licensing permitting software system upgrade was, um, again, recently implemented in, um, about a week or so ago. That's going to help us move forward with automation. And so the plan again is to have some online processing by the second quarter of twenty twenty-four. So hopefully by the end of June, we can have, um, some of the excise taxes, particularly the hotel motel taxes because that's attached to a business as well as the, um, mixed drinks. Um, that's going to give us, I think that's going to open up doors for us in terms of the reporting and, uh, and allowing us to be able to, um, keep track of, um, those, uh, accounts in a, on a, in a more standardized fashion and in electronic fashion as opposed to in, um, Excel spreadsheets. Um, we're going to continue to review our established processes, procedures, and protocol just to make sure that they're relevant and up to date. And then what we're also going to do is provide quarterly progress updates to the city manager, the mayor, and council. And that, Mr. Mayor, concludes the presentation. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Crabbe.
Well, it seems like I can, I can kind of see where, um, the overstatement may have occurred because, um, I heard deputy city manager say, um, that, well, I heard, I heard you say that, that you keep businesses on the list until the ta- final tax return is turned in. And then the deputy city manager said that, you know, there were businesses on the internal auditor's list that were obviously closed. But it sounds like they were still on the list. And so she wouldn't know how you handle that list and that there are still some closed peo- some closed businesses on that list. So I can see where the discrepancy could occur um, with both the inspect, the investigation and the internal audit.
But the report for the internal auditor has nothing to do with that. The report, the back section of the internal auditor's report is money that we have received for businesses. What I was referring to was on Mr. Peeler's report that includes the delinquents include businesses that have closed, people who have passed away, businesses who have transferred.
But they were still on the list.
On his list, not the internal auditor's list. The internal auditor's list.
No, they were on your list because they hadn't been taken off because of no final tax return. We were told, we were told that they stay on that list even, even after you know they're delinquent, you know they're dead, they're still there because you're waiting for the final tax return. So I can see why he would have included that be- because it's there.
Right.
You haven't taken it off.
But not on the internal auditor's list. Those were, those are two separate lists.
Okay.
Counselor Begley.
The, the first question's similar to Counselor Crabbe. So the, the example you gave of Hungry Howie's closing in April twenty seventeen, but you didn't get the final paperwork in twenty twenty-one. How can you, if I were to go, let, let's go back to twenty nineteen. You're going to look at Hungry Howie's in the system. How do you know whether or not they should be paying based off what's in the system during that interim time?
During that interim time, you don't know.
So you, so in that, in twenty nineteen, you would just assume they're delinquent at that point?
Well, uh, well, let me back up. Because, um, they would have appeared on the list originally for twenty eighteen, not having a renewal. Code enforcement would have, from that delinquent list, went out to that location and verified whether or not that business was still at that location and whether they were still in operation. They would have reported back to us that that business wasn't there. And we would make a notation on the account that the business wasn't there in operation. But we wouldn't actually close that account because they haven't finalized what may be due to the city.
So that notation you had put into the system, is that in a field that would be exported so that you could see, hey, this is not formally closed, but it's, it's, it's pending closure or expecting to be closed? Like, is there a way to see that in a report?
I'm going to say, at that time, no. Um, what we've talked about moving forward is maybe not leaving that account in an active status, changing. changing that status to some other status so that we could then run a report based on that account's status and we would know these are the businesses that are no longer in operation, but they haven't finalized their tax return with the city.
Okay. The second question, so understood that because the large businesses pay a much larger amount, it kind of skews the average, and so maybe the average is not the, the best approach.
Right.
But, but the idea is that we, we need to use some kind of approach to start quantifying it. Do you have, whether that's using the prior year tax return or either just looking at the classes you provided, some way to put an estimate on the number of uncollected accounts? What is the value on them so that we have a number?
Well, that i- in itself would be also hard to do for all of the accounts. As I'm told, the AccuTax team, a lot of those accounts that are on that list, it was their first time obtaining a license. So when they came to us, they only paid the $75. So there is no prior year. I think it was about 2,900 or so accounts on the list where it was their first license year. So they only paid us the $75. So we don't have any prior year data or any estimates that we could make for those businesses.
But I guess I'm just trying to figure out some way to get to a number where like, hey, this is the number we have to go get. So whether it's separating, hey, those with just the 75 initial versus those that have paid before and we can use prior history, just some way to give us a number so that when we're telling the constituents, hey, there's this much money to go collect, we've, we've got a number to tell them.
Well, again, in addition to doing that, we would also need to scrub the list, right? To look, to go through the system, look through those notes and just make sure that we're not pulling raw data off the list for businesses that we know are closed.
Yeah, which is, which is what we were saying, which is what happened.
Yeah. So, you know, with time and effort, obviously, we could come up with something that's not $20 million.
Yeah, and I, and I think, so I, I hear you saying it's not 20 million, but I think we're just looking for like, so if it's not 20 million, what is the number based off some methodology, right? So if we, if we don't think the average is the best methodology, let's come up with something else that we can defend.
Yeah, we can come up with something, but like I said, time.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Davis.
It's very manual process.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, public servants are supposed to be beyond reproach when it comes to serving the public. Look, I'm not here to make friends. I'm, I'm here to represent my constituents. I'm here to do what they've elected me to do. I am so sorry. Over the years, I've worked with some very good, wonderful people, really good people. Y'all are really good people, okay? I'm so sorry this has happened to finance. I really am. We've got a responsibility. It's not your department. It's a department that you have oversight in. And then there's other responsibilities day to day that y'all get involved with. And I read the report. The report said from your words that it got out of hand. And you didn't realize it. But then once you got in there and started doing the oversight and the management, it's, things started going in the right direction. I am so sorry that that has happened to the finance department. It just, it is what it is. I come from a business world. And buddy, let me tell you what, it hurts you when you have to walk somebody off the property. It really does. And I've been involved in many of those, managing assets for many people. But I'm responsible. I don't like it, but I'm responsible. But I feel like I've got my job to do. It's just unfortunate that we've got to this point. We, we, we've got to get it right. I've said this many times. We've got to get it right for the sake of the citizen reason. Where we're at now, if we need to help each other, just like I used to play games, we gotta help each other to get ahead of us, okay? We're behind. We're losing right now. There's failure. We got to get ahead of it. We're getting there. We'll get there and we'll win the game. But that's the direction we gotta go. I appreciate y'all willing to take that effort. And I, I, I know you're involved in so many things, but this landed on my, before me, and it's having to be addressed by the council. Mayor, I'd like Mr. Peeler to come up before he leaves. I know he's fixing to leave, get back to Atlanta. If there's anything you'd like to say, I've got two things that I wanted to finish up on, but I'd like you to have a chance to respond.
Well, we've got one more counselor waiting to ask a question here. Why don't we?
Well, it's part of my question, but if you want to, I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm just-
I mean-
All right. Ca- Counselor Cope.
I, I think I have, well, I have a couple of questions at first, before Angelica leaves. Is there a reason, or how, first of all, how long do businesses stay on the, on the list of, if they're not responding, how long do we keep them on the list before we decide that maybe they're not in existence anymore? Like, if Hungary Howie's left in 2018, how long are we gonna wait before we go and check on them?
Well, that's part of the annual process. Code enforcement, they do go out and check on the business to see if they're still there.
So there's just a breakdown of communication there?
Well, they will report back to us if the business is no longer in operation at that location. And then what happens is it's notated on the account and then the account stays as is. In the past, it stayed as is. Moving forward, we're gonna do something differently for those accounts where we've been notified that that business owner is deceased or they're no longer there in accordance with code enforcement telling us so.
Seems like there should be some communication back and forth there or just some processes in, in our business license. Is there a reason why we're, if time is of the essence and we know who's doing business in Columbus, is there a reason why we're waiting till the middle of February to issue the occupational business license tax renewal forms? Cause it's, just because it's come up in, in several meetings last year of, you know, council authorizing some delays and that business licenses take between three and four months to process. And yet, we're waiting for six weeks into the year before we mail those business license renewal forms off to businesses in hopes that they will send them back in April. I mean, I've gotten tax, tax information January 2nd from, I mean, from, from different, different entities. Is there not a reason that we don't? I mean, this has been, this has been a pretty hot topic since July. Is there a reason that we wouldn't be prepared, January 2nd, to send out business license renewals to our businesses and be on the ball so that we're not caught in April already behind? Right now, we're, right, right now, we're three weeks behind.
Well, the, the target has, in years past, always been the-
Well, I'm not talking about years past. I'm talking about like 2024.
Yeah.
It is very evident that we have a problem. Regardless of whether we are, we have $10 million unprocessed or we have $45 million unprocessed, we have an issue. We shouldn't be talking about what we've been doing in the past. We need an action plan to move forward. And Business 101 would say, January 2nd, those business license renewals would be mailed out, stamped in the mailbox, ready to go, to do good by our citizens.
Well, the logic that's in the program, if we were to generate the batch report before the next year, before January 1st of the next year, the logic in the program is to pick up renewals for businesses that had a license in the prior year. And so the reason why it takes some time, once we generate the batch renewal reports around mid-January, is because we have to manually stuff 7,000 envelopes.
Right, which was brought up in, in August and we suggested that there be an RFP put out for bulk mailing.
Well, bulk mailing doesn't, that actually allows us to get those-
Or some method to-
Reports mailed out at a discounted price or, or put through the, to, through the postage meter by some organization or company other than the city. But that doesn't actually stuff the envelopes.
I guess, I guess my point is, is that I'm concerned that in, that come April 1st or April 2nd or April 15th, that we're going to have businesses that are out there that are going to be saying, I don't have my business license renewal. And we're gonna be in the same spot that we've been in for the last however many years or nine months.
And honestly, you probably will because you'll have some businesses that-
Well, that's not very reassuring.
Well, I'm saying you'll have some businesses that have not updated their mailing addresses with us. Mr. Peeler referenced in the report all the returning mails that, or return renewal packets that we receive. And that's not on us to update the mailing address. It's the business.
Yeah, but let me just say, what you stated is my goal.
Okay.
You know, July 2nd, excuse me, January 2nd, those things should be mailed out. It didn't happen this year. We hope that next year. In fact, it will happen next year. We'll figure that out. And, you know, I know that they've mailed them out and they staggered them going out because I called, I, I was sharing with them. You know, before I received a letter, at least my wife received a letter from you, from revenue, I shared with them. We were on a Teams meeting. I got this letter from Phoenix City. Of course, I don't do business in Phoenix City anymore, but I held it up to the screen and they're still sending me this letter. But at least they're sending me a letter to say, renew your business license. And so I shared it with them on a Teams meeting. I held it up to the screen to let them see it. Well, two days later, I received a letter from them saying, renew your business license. I was in another meeting. I held it up, says, oh, I got your letter today. And so she says, yeah, we send, we send out whatever first and the insurance office next. And so, you know, I checked my wife's mail and came in the mail for insurance. And so that's what they are doing, but we can do better than that. And we will do better than that. And so, but, but let me tell you. And, and I don't have to tell you that she's been out away for some time during the Christmas holidays and, and before that and during that time she was away and up to this day. She's not focusing on anything else. You know, and I've said this to the mayor because she's so tied, she's so tied up with this right now that everything else in the office. I think I received your response, final response, at 4:50 PM today. That's how busy she is. And so all those things that the pillar report talked about and, and, and I, I know someone asked him to look at policies. Well, we can pay pillar to, to get policies, but from other jurisdictions who get it right. But we can do that too. But if we're rather because it sounds better coming from pillar, we'll let pillar do it and pay him. But that's something I can do and will do. But we're happy to have pillar to do it and pay him to do it. So, but, but we, we will be where you, you've talked about, Counselor. I just wanna be clear about that.
I mean, I guess, I, I think that there's, just before I turn it over to Counselor Davis, you know, I think that there's a lot of, he said, she said, a lot of emotional, there, there's a lot of emotions flying back between our internal auditor and our finance department and our other departments. And I, I think, and it's been brought up a couple of times so far tonight about the cost that this is, this is incurred. And I think that council should rest easy and I think our, our citizens should rest easy knowing that, you know, with, without this study and without bringing in a third party to come up with this, this report, we wouldn't, we would be in the same spot that we were in, in June or July. And we wouldn't know that we had, whether, whether you are on Team 20 million or you are on Team 45 million or you're on Team 5 million. If it costs $300,000, if it costs $400 million in order to collect $20 million, for me, that is well worth it. And, and I, and I think that the citizens should understand that it is well worth it to have to spend some money in order to gain some money. Without it, you know, we, we would be right where we were in June. And I think that this has really highlighted that we have a lack of SOPs, a lack of standard operating procedures. The culture in our departments needs to be changed. I, I don't necessarily think it's just hard to keep people at CCG. I think we need to change the culture that is in our departments. And it just highlights that we don't have the proper processes or practices that are needed in order to make a, our, our department work correctly. So I do think that the citizens should rest easy knowing that, that this money was well spent in order to, to move this department forward.
And Mayor, let me just say, I don't disagree with the money that was spent. You know, in fact, I wish we had spent more. And I say that because, because of money and because of time, this was not really, or is not, a forensic audit. I, you know, I, I would have preferred that Mr. Peeler, through this forensic audit process, had more money and more time to deliver a product that's not based on averaging 1,200 dollars per business or 1,300 per business, but based on actuals. And that way, it would, we would have had a document to go in and use to say, we've, we've come to visit with you to collect what you actually owe. Because if we went out to knock on a door with an assumption of $1,200 and that business is in the $321 category, that finance director shared with you, we've got a problem. So I would have wanted to spend more money to drill down, to be really forensic that you have the actual number instead of an averaged number.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, Counselor Davis, wrap yours up, sir?
Thanks, Mayor. I will. Three points real quick. Mr. City Manager, we, we don't need to pay anybody. Matter of fact, we've, we've already asked Troutman Pepper about that and they said they weren't the ones to, to be asking that question, nor Actuous there, which is a very reputable auditing firm. I think we got an opportunity coming up here soon with the best people. I don't know who's facilitating the communication. We've got the University of Georgia Go Dogs. We got the Carl Vincent School of Good Government. And those people specialize in this. And I think they, this is a great question to ask them, to help us understand best practices and how it's done throughout the state and what they would recommend. That's the perfect venue to do it. And I hope that, I hope that happens. Madam Finance Director, you had given a report back in, just wanted to ask you one question. September, I think that was your last financial report to us that you give, the, the snapshot that you give. I think you said at that point in time, we had collected 1.2 million dollars in occupational tax. Where are we at now on collections? What, what, what are you looking to collect for the year? I think you budgeted an amount. What are you looking to collect and how much has, has been collected since then?
Uh, what, what, what are you looking to collect for the year? I think you budgeted an amount. What are you looking to collect and how much has, has been collected since then?
As far as collections, I don't know that right off the top of my head, but I think the budget is around fifteen million. Oh, it's over fifteen million.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
I can uh, get that information as far.
September, we were at one point two, where are we at now?
I can get that information.
Okay. Um. Two things and then I'll let Mr. Pillar speak. The uh, mayor, we, we've got a, as far as, this council's gonna have to determine, I guess. Uh, I know we talked about being aggressive with collections, I know we talked about going out there and go getting it and actually the reports recommend, go get it, it's yours, go get it, but. I think this council's gonna be confronted again, we waived penalties and interest for a while, but we're gonna be confronted with how to. What decisions are we gonna make? Are we just gonna continue that or are we gonna go ahead and, and maybe create some incentives for people? Take it as far as a going and close it out, but we've got to start new and we've got to get back on track. I think that's something we have to discuss. And then. The other thing, I, i- it's clear to me after the communication here today that, that we've got to do the follow-ups. And we got whether it's Troutman Pepper coming in and doing that in a couple of months or internal auditor to see where we've got, where we've. Where we've been, what was stated, where the plum line was drawn and then where we're at today and where we're going. And just see, uh, see if we can measure the prod- progress. I think that's the right thing to do and, and that, that. You know, that's gonna help everybody if they have uh, you know, uh, any. Any confusion about the matter. So.
Got you.
Um, that's it, mayor, whatever.
Thank you.
Mr. Pillar.
Mr. Pillar, do you have any closing comments, sir?
Just a couple. First, and if I didn't say this earlier, I'll say it now, um, the finance department. Um, was very responsive in our request for information. There were, they couldn't give us everything that we asked for. Because in part of some systems limitations or just from a practical standpoint, so much information was in hard copy and so many different files. That it would have taken forever when you look at the thousands of businesses. Um, so I should have made that point earlier. I, I do wanna. Comment on um, one choi- choice of word that um, the finance director made and she used the word misleading. I, I think that was a poor choice of words in, in her report. Um, all of the information that we used to conduct our analysis, we received from the finance department. And that included a specific request, tell us which businesses are active. And which businesses are closed so that we can accurately calculate the loss amount. So, th- th- they, they provided us with the information that they had, that's the information that they used. And that is an assumption that is clearly set out in our report, that it, that, that we had to rely on that information. And that if a business is designated active, but is in fact closed and does not owe, then of course that is going to drive down. The amount of collections, but inha- implicit in that and baked into that is an obligation. To accurately maintain records of whether businesses are active or closed and it sounds like that. That is a new initiative um, since this investigation was commissioned in order to make sure that those lists are scrubbed, I think are the. Or the, is the phrase um, that the finance director used. So, the, i- in, so that, that's a good thing. I mean, the point is for action to be taken, um. We previewed all of our findings with the finance director along the way because we wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to weigh in. With the methodology that we were using. I, I personally found those sessions very helpful. I found the finance director to be knowledgeable and willing to provide information. Um, and then just finally, um. It sounds like everyone's on the same page with the recommendations, that these, these recommendations are designed to better the processes. Uh, of the finance department, increase revenue that is owed to the city, decrease uh, a- and decrease backlog. So, to the extent that this is, you know, that this uh, uh, process, even though it may have been painful for some along the way. Uh, it sounds like in all, it's going to be helpful to get things uh, back on track.
Mr. Pillar, again, thank you, sir. Councillor Davis, you have another comment? Also having flashbacks. Uh, we got. Mr. Pillar, seriously, thank you because that is the whole, that is the whole focus of these, whether it's investigation or an audit. Is to find ways to get better. It's to identify things that, where we have some shortcomings and we can improve. And I think it's encouraging that everybody around the table has echoed those sentiments, so thank you for your work. Um. Ms. Fay, it's uh, your agenda, but I think we had a request to allow our um, recorder's court judge to come up and give a, a quick briefing. Uh, can we call that up if council has no objections? All right, hearing none, Judge Riney.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for having us. It's been a year since you all appointed me, at the risk of alienating every, everyone, I'll try to make this quicker than uh, I had originally planned. But uh, about a little over a year ago, you all appointed me uh, in recorder's court as the chief judge. I wanted to come back and give you a little bit of an update as to where we are. I would categorize it as kind of a year of change and progress, we're getting settled in, we've made a lot of changes, we've made a lot of progress. I would say that is not the be all end all, uh, but I think it lays a strong foundation for where we at. Uh, you all have expanded our team, as you recall, uh, we have three full-time judges now. You also added some additional personnel that were definitely necessary. I think we've created a more efficient court. That, like I said, we are still, and that's a constantly evolving process uh, that we are working towards. We strengthen our communication with the people that we work with, the agencies, Columbus Police Department, they've been great working with us. Um, and we've been working with them much closer, the sheriff's office, IT and a number of agencies that we're working very close with. In short, I just think we've created a great foundation for uh, twenty twenty-four and the future. And uh, oh, like I said, try to make this much quicker than uh, I had originally planned. I'm not gonna go through all of what we do, um, but uh, the short of it is. Recorder's Court, a lot of people don't know, it always amazes me as to how much uh, people don't know. But uh, whoops, excuse me. Um, we hear all criminal cases, everything from murder, aggravated assault. Battery, simple battery, theft by shoplifting, all the way down to uh, stop sign violations, traffic light violations, speeding. And leash laws, so we hear everything made by the Columbus Police Department, Georgia State Patrol, Columbus State University, um, those areas.
And Mr. Riney, I'm sorry for interrupting, uh, don't rush, this is, you, you guys have a vital role in, in the uh. Law enforcement.
Well, I know you all have been here and.
No, 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 we're gonna be here for a while longer too. But I, I wanna make sure we get, give you an opportunity to.
Well, and if you all have any questions, please stop me because I, I definitely want to, but uh. It is a massive operation that we undertake and uh, and I will talk a little bit about the number of cases that we do here in a minute, but uh. It really is, we do arrest warrants, search warrants, um, orders for production of documents, we collect millions of dollars in fine. Um, and we were doing that with about sixteen personnel before you all expanded our, our court. So, uh, if you can imagine um, what that looked like and how that operated. Um, and Ms. Williams, our, our chief clerk who is here as well, um, did a great job of uh, gathering a cohesive unit. We have a great team. Um, that we are working with. As I said, I took office on January first. Judge Henderson and Judge Whitaker took office on February twenty-seventh, that expanded us to three full-time judges. One pro tem, Judge Robert Wilson, um, and some of you may know that uh, another pro tem passed away last week, Judge Robert Watkins. We send our sympathies to his family. Um, we've added a chief deputy clerk, finance manager and two clerk positions that were much needed. I mean, it is amazing uh, how we operated without those positions before when I look at it. Um, so we have a total of twenty team members, we are fully staffed now, um, and we are, we have a great group of people. Um, it's simply a great team. They are committed and dedicated to serving you all. I can't say enough about them, I'm extremely proud of them. Um, they work hard, they are very service oriented. Uh, from the beginning that I took over and it, they were this way before, but they've even come together more cohesively. And our philosophy is we treat other people as we want to be treated. And I think that's what we have instilled in them. Um, and they work hard to do it and I am extremely proud of all of them, I can't tell you enough. A little bit about what we've done over the last year, um, we talk about case statistics, I know their numbers. But uh, we've handled over twenty-three thousand four hundred cases in twenty twenty-three. And as I said, that's everything from murder cases all the way to traffic citation, every category of cases has increased. Um, I think uh, people ask me why that is, I think there's a, a number of reasons, is it just an increase in crime? I don't think so. I think I look at the uh, police department, the morale of the police department has increased tremendously. I see police officers every single day and they are doing a great job. Chief Mathis has done a great job over there. And so, I think when they feel like the courts are supporting them, when we are applying the law equally and fairly, when we are holding people accountable. Um, I think they feel a confidence in that court system as well. So, I think that all that kind of plays together, but uh. We've had an increase of over two thousand four hundred and thirty-two cases um, just in the last year. Um, and in the first three weeks of this year, I will say, we've seen an exponential number. We've already had six hundred and fifty-two more cases. Just in the first three weeks of this year compared to the, to last year. So, we're seeing a tremendous increase. I don't know how that'll play out as the year comes along, um, but we've, it poses some challenges for us, but uh. You all giving us and the vision that you all had of giving us three judges has uh, been a tremendous help to us as well. Revenue, our revenue has increased over three point nine four million dollars. That is not our goal, that is not what our judges do. We're not about raising revenue at all and our judges don't concern themselves. But I do think it is a byproduct of just holding people accountable. Um, I think everybody in here wants to know that when they go before a judge. They're gonna be treated the same way as any other person that comes before them and that is my goal, is to treat people equally, impartially and fairly. And so, I think that uh, is part in part uh, some of the increase um, in the revenue. Without going into detail a lot, that brings in a lot of money for the city, um, in the law library, victim's assistant funds and a number of other areas. So, just a quick review of accomplishments and I'm gonna run through this quickly, um. But uh, basically, as I said, our goal is to hold people accountable in a fair and impartial manner. Uh, we want people to be able to predict, if I go before a judge, this is what's going to happen. I know I'm gonna be treated the same way as anyone else. We've enforced traffic violations. Um, all our motor vehicle accidents before this were being bound over to state court automatically. We have authority and jurisdiction to handle those cases and we are handling those cases in recorder's court. Um, so that adds a, that takes a tremendous burden off a state court because thousands of cases were getting bound over to state court. And they have all these traffic accident cases that they were handling. We are handling those, I mean, we stopped that immediately, excuse me. Um, we're holding contempt of court and failure to appear is accountable and uh, and I think a lot of that, the prior um, judge. Uh, with COVID and everything else, it was, it just created kind of a snowball effect when you have one judge and sixteen personnel. Um, it created a snowball effect for him as a, a major um, task for him. But we are now holding people accountable, if you fail to appear and you don't have a valid reason for it, we're holding you accountable for failing to appear. And I think that uh, holding people accountable is a, a key in, in many aspects. My personal philosophy is it begins at a low level. If you don't start holding people accountable down here for misdemeanors or traffic violations. Um, then people don't feel like they're being held accountable to you. Um, we've tried to increase our efficiency, we separated our traffic court and our preliminary probable cause hearing and principal summons hearings. Um, we use two courtrooms full-time now. Um, that does a number of things, one, it gets our officers back on the street quicker so that they are not. In courts for hours at a time. Um, we al- we also have a, a officer, one officer that does traffic court or two officers. Um, that do all those cases. It's only if a person wants a bench trial that we actually continue a case or have a trial, we have to call that officer back. Obviously, we can't have every officer in there for every single case that we have on every docket. We try to get the general public out by dividing our dockets out. I don't think our general public should be inconvenienced. Sitting in a courtroom for three and four hours at a time for a stop sign violation to have their case heard. I wanted to get them out of there quicker. Um, in the last few weeks or month, we've seen an increase in. In traffic cases and it may be something that we have to look at cutting off our docket because we have been in court longer than I would like any of our citizens sitting in court. Uh, we revised our dockets, we've created policy and procedure manual for all of our clerks. So that there's no misunderstanding, that they know how to do things, they know the standard, they can always refer to it. So that uh, they know exactly what to expect and what to do. Um, so these are just things that we've done over the last year. We try to create more of a team-centered approach um, in problem solving, uh, state court and superior court wanting written orders. For no contacts instead of the oral orders that have been done. Um, this gives something in writing, it gives something in writing to our victim. It gives something in writing for future prosecution if that violation is, is uh, that order is violated. As I said before, we are doing all motor vehicle accident cases, all concurrent jurisdiction cases. So, recorder's court has concurrent jurisdiction over many offenses such as theft by shoplifting with state court. We're trying to handle as many of those as we can in our court. And obviously, they have a right to a trial, a right to a jury trial and those would get bound over to state court. But we're trying to be more efficient in the way we handle those cases. Uh, we went to Savannah, Chatham County Recorder's Court to try to learn from them and see what we could glean from them for more efficient processes, see how they do things. And then we shared information with them. I lost it. Um, I don't know what's up there. We're trying to be good stewards of your money, uh, or our taxpayer money. Uh, we used to send out notices by regular mail. Uh, we cut that out and we're doing all our notices by postcards, it saves us money. We're digitizing a lot of our documents, uh, our criminal histories, um, our driving histories, things of that nature, all uh, going to digital. So that uh, we're not printing those out and copying those documents. Um, we've added a finance manager, um. Which you can imagine not having a finance manager in a, in an office that's bringing in over three million dollars. Now we have a finance manager, um, we're able to rely on that expertise and that is a tremendous help to us as well. We're not using pro tem judges as much because we have three full-time judges, we are using those almost exclusively. Uh, Judge Wilson is generally only sitting in case of an emergency and a couple of weekends, Saturdays a month. Uh, but our full-time judges are sitting on Saturdays as well on holidays. As I said, we want to establish a culture of exemplary customer service, that is our goal. We serve the city. Um, and our office has taken that on one hundred percent, um, and they do an outstanding job of that and I'm very proud of them. For the way that they handle it. I don't know what complaints you all hear, but overall, I mean, I think that with the number of people that we deal with. We are doing an amazing job. Can we improve? Always, and that's what we always seek to do is improve. Um, we're trying to make our court as accessible as possible, we've completely revised and updated our website. We've included numerous FAQ's and things that we just did not have before, answering questions. Trying to keep people from calling in and tying up a clerk for a long, uh, for a long time answering questions. So, those are just some of the efficiencies um, that uh, we're trying to do as well. Trying to get more community involved. It just builds up morale when you're serving others, not only as part of your duty and your job duties. But when you're out in the community, serving others, participating, it builds up morale, it builds up that cohesion. Um, and I think that is an important part of our office as well. What's to come in twenty twenty-four? Um, we're looking forward to having a new courtroom in the sheriff's administrative building. My goal would be to operate three courts, um, as much as possible, have a traffic court over in the sheriff's administrative building. Have our preliminary hearings um, in courtroom one, have environmental court as a separate court and principal summons as a separate court in, in courtroom two. That keeps people out of the courtroom or gets them out of the courtroom quicker because they're not waiting for so many cases, um, and that would be one of our goals. As I said, we want to separate environmental court and principal summons. We're looking for a new case management software, um, we are hoping to have that fairly soon. Something that is more, uh, gives uh, our citizens more access to their case, where they can go online and look at it. And gives them easier access to pay it online, it makes it a whole lot easier all the way around. So, that is something that we will be transitioning to here. Increasing our use of technology, going a lot more to the digital electronic signatures and things like that or some other things that we will be working on. Um, we certainly have some challenges in twenty twenty-four, um, our facilities are. It's extremely cold or extremely hot, uh, electricity today or is in court and twice our electricity went out and our courtroom is completely dark. So, you know, the, the old recorder's. So you know, the the old recorder's court building does pose some challenges for us as well. We have challenges. Obviously, my goal is to get our officers back out on the street as quickly as possible. I don't want them sitting in court for longer than is possible. They recently switched to twelve-hour shifts. That kind of stacks. We used to have three different court times, eight o'clock for morning watch, nine o'clock for day watch, and two o'clock for evening watch. But having two twelve-hour shifts kind of condenses everything to eight and nine for the most part. And so we're looking at those challenges as well as we move forward to deal with those issues. All in all, at every level this last year, our judges and our team share something in common, and they all believe in what they do. I think every one of our employees, our team members, and Ms. Williams believes in what we do, believes in serving our public, believes treating people with dignity and respect and doing the best job that they can. All in all, I'm very proud. I'm very proud of the accomplishments that we've made over the last year. There's many more. These are just some of the highlights here. I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have. We will improve, and I anticipate that two thousand and twenty-four is actually, I think, two thousand and twenty-three was getting settled in, laying a good foundation, and two thousand and twenty-four, we're going to continue to improve recorder's court and to make it one of the best in the state.
Counselor Begley?
I I appreciate how you're able to handle all these improvements while your caseload is growing by twelve percent. I noticed the revenue grew by eighty percent. Is do you know the reasons that the revenue growth outpaced the case growth?
I think part of it is, as I said, prior to it, because of COVID and a number of other reasons, like all motor vehicle accident cases were bound over to state court. A lot of concurrent jurisdiction cases that we have concurrent jurisdiction were automatically being bound over to state court. So we are handling a lot more of those cases. There was also a backlog. So there is some case backlog from COVID that we dealt with and eliminated. That probably accounts for some of it. I think the other part of it is we've been holding people accountable for traffic violations, things of things of that nature, and I think that is in large part accounts for some of that increase as well. We did not raise fines. We did raise some fines that were very low, but I didn't do a complete review of fines. One of our goals in two thousand and twenty-four is to do a survey throughout the state to see where we're at with fines. Last year, the economy wasn't too great, and I felt like I did not want to raise fines or or that issue. So we only raised ones that were clearly extremely low, but I don't think that affected it too much in that respect.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind counsel that the report you just heard is was the goal of Chair of the Recorder's Court Committee, Counselor Judy Thomas, and Counselor Pop Barnes, who are not here tonight. They will be able to watch this, and Counselor Thomas, both of them are probably watching now, but it this is exactly what our goal was. And Judge Judge Riney has certainly lived up to that. You and your team have done a phenomenal job to not only play catch-up with the backlog, but to get everything organized the way you have. It's just this is what we saw when we interviewed you, and my hat's off to you and Judge Henderson and Judge Whitaker. And the only closing comment that I would like to ask of you is, and your judges and your staff, when somebody comes before you that has littered, been a litterer, hit them hard.
I hear. And I can say that you all have been very supportive, and I thank you all for your support. The city manager, we did not have enough space in recorder's court, found us some additional space in city hall. Rather than busting out walls or trying to do those types of things, that saved a lot of money for our city as well. So everybody has been very supportive. I suspect the honeymoon might be over, and now it's time to get to work as well. But we have a lot to do, and I think two thousand and twenty-four looks extremely good, and I foresee a lot more progress as well in making our court more efficient. I think one of the questions that I've been asked is about getting officers back out in court. And Counselor Allen, I think you had mentioned this at one point, is I think compared to two thousand and twenty-two, and Chief Deaton may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, we are getting officers out a lot quicker. Can we improve on that? We certainly can. But my goal is to get officers back out on the street or back home if they've been up all night. That is certainly one of my goals. I have been asked about having officers testify at for other officers at probable cause hearings and things of that nature. So actually, to have one officer be able to read a report. And to answer that question, I think we really have to look at the purpose of the probable cause hearing. Part of that is to prevent abuse. Law enforcement has tremendous amount of authority. If they can make an arrest without being going before an independent magistrate, providing the basis for that probable cause, people could sit in jail and languish for a long time before their case is even heard. So I think it's important to be able to have an officer that is accountable, that has personal knowledge of the case, actually present that case and be subject to some cross-examination so that a defense attorney can can penetrate it a little bit to see how it stands out. It makes for better officers. It makes their cases better if they're subject to that, and it avoids that abuse. Our country is kind of founded on providing some protection, that that balance of power, so to speak. And so I think that is extremely important as well. It also creates some efficiencies because there is not a week that goes by that the DA's office doesn't see some case that should be elevated or decreased in seriousness or dismissed. So it kind of gives everybody, defense and prosecution, a better eye on their case. Sometimes that helps to move cases to resolution quicker because the defendant has just heard what that officer has said, knows firsthand what that officer is going to testify to and what the evidence is against them in terms of probable cause. So I think all of that is important in terms of of the questions that I've been asked about officers testifying.
Yes, sir. Counselor Davis?
Yes, sir.
Judge, the report, great start, excellent finish. I like the word pride, proud of what y'all do. That's that's great. I think the council's pleased with the direction the court's going. Please convey that to your colleagues and all those involved in recorder's court. Appreciate all the hard work and effort.
I work.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Huff?
Judge, congratulations, and please give that to your team.
I will.
Just a couple of questions. I'll talk to you off camera, off meeting time later. On your case management software, is that in place now? It's coming?
It is coming. So we have Odyssey in place right now with Tyler Technologies. We've had issues, some of which we went to tremendous extent to try to resolve. Some of those issues just haven't been resolving, but it should be within, I've heard different things, but it's coming up fairly soon. Within a couple of months is what I understand, but you never know how that's going to play out.
Okay, and I know the sheriff gave us some dates in the past on the construction and everything, completion of the building. Do you have any updates as far as I don't recall right now when you'll be able to have a courtroom in his building?
I I'm not exactly sure. I've heard the the summer some point in time, but I'm not exactly sure. We certainly are looking forward to it. That will certainly help us have a court dedicated to traffic court, and hopefully, we can create some dockets that will be more effective for our citizens and for our officers as well.
Okay, and you mentioned you will have three courts going at the same time?
Yes. Now courtroom two will still be used. So right now courtroom two is used on Fridays by Superior Court. I know state court had indicated that they would like to use it on Thursday mornings. So we can leave some room for them. I mean, I certainly want to accommodate them, and I certainly understand that it's more beneficial for them to be there as opposed to transporting inmates to the government center. So I I am happy to work with them and want to do so, but I certainly want to use all three courtrooms as much as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you. Good to see you.
See you.
Judge, thank you. Y'all doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
The city? Yeah, oh. Yes, sir. Hang on.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank the judge, but I I gotta weigh in on Mayor Pro Tem's comment about the litter. Please help us to discourage litter. I just have to put that out to the judge and to his team. It's it's all over Columbus. It is it's destroying our city, so so please help us.
And I will say, as part of that, we have been directing people and offering community service as a way of paying instead of paying fines. We offer that to do community service through Public Works, which puts people more out on the street picking up some of that litter. And we also have been offering it as a pre-trial diversion program for first offenders or youthful offenders of doing, say, forty hours' community service in lieu of conviction. And that has proven to provide a lot of community service hours for our city as well. It certainly is point taking.
Very good. Thank you, sir. The city attorney, your agenda, sir?
All right, Judge Riney, thank you again, and Clerk Williams for everything you're doing in recorder's court. The zoning hearings, Mayor, we've got four of them. If you're here on a zoning case, just sit tight. We'll take a vote on these first four items. First one up, Mayor, is forty-two twenty-eight Third Avenue, Door Neil Enterprises. It's ready for a vote.
Motion and second to approve. Any discussion? All right, Chris, if you put it on the screen, counselors, please register your vote. We need one more. There we go. It's approved.
All right, next one is property at thirty-three hundred six seventy.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All right, Chris, counselor, please, any votes? All right, it's approved.
Okay, the next item is a text change in the unified development ordinance for the resource conservation subdivision approval to come to this body.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none. Chris, please put it on there. Counsel, register your votes. All right, that's approved.
All right, and the last zoning item are two properties for a conservation use valuation assessment rezoning.
Motion second to prove. Any discussion? All right, Chris? Counsel, please, any vote? That's approved.
All right. We'd call up next Mr. Ricky Shores from the Fire and EMS Department or Chief Scarpo, but this is the first reading. If there are any questions around the table, this was for electric vehicle infrastructure, key lock boxes, and recommended for approval. Did you want to say anything, Chief Shores?
There doesn't appear to be any questions.
Okay, we'll bring this back.
Thank you, Chief.
There's no objection. We'll bring it back on a consent agenda next week, Mayor. On the next item, Mr. Pruitt is here. I think we're going to need a motion to amend to remove a couple of properties. You want to tell us which ones?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, members of council. So after the agenda was set, we did, you know, we always go through and double-check the property ownership before we take another step. And through that final review process before tonight, we did discover that two of the properties, two out of the eight that are listed, did change ownership, which means we need to go back through the process and now notify the current owners. The first one would be twenty-nine twenty-eight Tenth Street. Hardy Williams was the previous owner. That ownership has now changed. The other one would be fifty-nine twelve Glen Eden Drive. Willie Smith was the previous owner. That ownership has now changed. So would request that those be amended to be removed from this ordinance. The twenty-nine twenty-eight Tenth Street, number two on the list, and number seven fifty-nine twelve Glen Eden Drive.
Hey, can we get a motion to remove those, please?
Motion second to remove? Is it on those two properties that are being removed? All right, it's been it's been removed. Do you but you're welcome to speak to it. It's a it's a first reading. Chris, can you turn on the micro? Yeah, 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 get a handheld. Thank you, Lindsay. Ms. Palomar, if you just states your name and?
My name is Audrey Palomar, and I live in Columbus, Georgia. I am an heir at the property of twenty-nine twenty-eight Tenth Street in Columbus, Georgia. And I've been through various thoughts about what could be done. And the main thing that sticks out in my mind is that the property cannot be sold unless all heirs are in agreeance with it. And it's been a very important struggle to me because my mother is the oldest child of the parentage of Hardy Williams and Mattie Pearl Williams. And when you say that the 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 property has been removed, I'm not in understanding because I have not heard of a sale. I'm very shocked to see that the owners on here are Robin Thompson and Robert J. Holston. And I'm just concerned about, that's my very first time seeing that information when I arrived here today. So I don't know all the lawful policies, but I do know that I've been told several times that the property cannot be sold unless all heirs are in agreement with it.
All right, Mr. Pruitt, maybe after your presentation, you can get with Ms. Palomar, explain to her it's coming off of the demolition list ordinance right now, and it may go back on later if things don't change, no matter who the heirs are. But Ms. Palomar, this is not going to be demolished at this time. It's coming off of the list, and you'll have to get with Mr. Pruitt and his office in inspections and code and see if there's a way to get it up to code.
Okay, you said it may possibly be taken off the demolition list?
It's taken off the list for tonight. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so how long is the policy to have it off the list?
So we'll have to go back through the entire process, which I believe you attended the initial hearing for this property maybe a year or so ago.
In April.
And so we would, now that the property has been transferred to you and the other heirs, as I understand it, we'll send a new notice out to you and all the heirs that are listed on the deed, and you will have an opportunity to come to that same hearing again. So it's a multi-month process to go back through that before it would ever come back here.
Okay, so are the heirs required to attend the meeting? Because in April of last year, I was the only attendant at the meeting for the demolition hearing. And since that time, I have, you know, received seemingly, it's not seemingly, but I have received resistance in approaching the heirs of which my mother, like I said, is the oldest of the heirs. So are you going to send the the letter to all of the known heirs?
Yeah, we'll send it to all the owners, and as the city attorney said, once we get done running through this, I'll be happy to talk with you and kind of go into some more details about this project.
Okay, but you said all the owners. There's only one owner, and that is Hardy and Mattie Williams. I don't know where, Robin.
Well, that's for the other property, but I'll, like I said, I can talk.
What other property?
For the twenty-nine thirty-seven tenth, but.
No, that's not the address. The address is twenty-nine twenty-eight.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Palomar, he's talking about another property on that list. So what we'll do is, your property, he will explain to you what you'll go through. You're going to go through the exact same process. You'll be notified. You'll tell everybody with an. They'll tell everybody with an interest in that property. They'll be notified, and then they'll go back through the process.
Well, when you say you'll tell everyone, that's why I'm trying to stress.
And that's why, that's why I'm suggesting you talk to Mr. Pruitt, and he can talk to you one-on-one and explain to you how this will work.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, and thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, we have not voted. It is a motion and a second to remove those two properties. All right, all those in favor say aye? Are there any opposed? All right, Counsel Crabbe? That's okay.
Okay, Director Pruitt, you got slides on these others?
Yes, I do. And real briefly, at my last update, I did mention I would start including a slide such as this that just quickly gives you an update on the last demolition list that was approved, which was in October of 2023. Just one update, number seven at twenty fifteen Fifth Avenue, they did complete that demolition within the last week, so that we did take care of six out of the seven. The one on Hard Degree was a bank foreclosure. The bank got, took ownership of it, and they've already sold it again to a third party who does have plans to rehab that. So we will work with the new owner on that one and then bring it forward at an appropriate time. So if they don't take actions within the next six months, I would think we'd be bringing it back for your consideration. These were the original eight on the list. With the two removals, it reduces the total to one hundred and thirteen, one oh four and eighty-five cents.
Okay, we'll go through the six that are left. Twenty-nine thirty-seven Tenth Street, Robin Thompson, Robert J. Holston, owners. Is anybody present on that property?
That's her.
Because twenty-nine thirty-seven is not the address associated with Robin Thompson or John Ryan, Robert Jonathan Holston. They are not associated with twenty-nine thirty-seven. They are directly associated with twenty-nine twenty-eight.
So they, I believe they are the heirs, but they also own this property in the tax records. This is the owner of twenty-nine thirty-seven Tenth Street.
Yes, I left the tax office, thank you. I left the tax office at about four fifteen today.
And they gave me a printout that says Hardy Williams and co-owner Ruby Root Williams. Both are deceased. Hardy is the father of the property. Mattie is the mother of the property. I don't know why she is not listed, but I was told that that information came from public access. I'll be willing to talk with you about anything regarding the property at twenty-nine thirty, I mean, twenty-nine twenty-eight Tenth Street, but I know nothing about property at twenty-nine thirty-seven. Robin is associated...
That's what we're on.
Could you tell me again what you said?
Yeah. That, yes, ma'am. I think, I think you're, that's the one that we're talking about right now, so...
The twenty-nine thirty-seven?
Yes, ma'am.
So why do you have, right after twenty-nine thirty-seven, you have the name Robin Thompson?
That's what's, that's, those are the owners of record based on the research that's been done. You can, you can have that conversation with Mr. Pruitt.
Uh, no, I can have the conversation with you publicly because I know...
You won't get anywhere talking to me because I don't understand which one he's talking about.
Mr. Pruitt, which property are you speaking of? Twenty-nine thirty-seven or twenty-nine twenty-eight in regards to Robin Thompson and Robert J. Holston?
So for twenty-nine thirty-seven Tenth Street, Robin Thompson and Robert J. Holston are listed as the owner of records for that property.
That's erroneous. I know them personally. That is erroneous. I told you that at twenty-nine twenty-eight, throughout my life, that is where my grandparents provided shelter for all the children and their biological children. So I don't know how you can get it all mixed up. You know, that, those names are not associated with twenty-nine thirty-seven. And, and I mean, you keep saying the same thing, and I'm going to keep telling you the same thing because you are erroneous.
Well, Mayor, I suggest that they remain on the list if Mr. Pruitt has that info from the tax records and then perhaps it can be sorted out in the next week.
That's, yeah, we'll just, we'll just keep it on, we'll just keep it on the list and then...
Yeah.
Yeah. So the current public records show that those are the owners, but you'll have some time to get it cleared up if you want to because it won't, it won't be even voted on for two weeks, so...
Normally, we'd bring it back next week, but we can hold it off till February.
Well, we've got a consent agenda for next week, so...
Yeah, but we've got other items.
Yeah, but Ms., yeah, but Ms. Palomar, that is the owner of record according, according to the tax records right now, so...
The owner of record according to tax?
Well, I'm just, I'm...
Twenty-nine thirty-seven.
We're not getting anywhere doing this, so, so what I would suggest you do...
Yeah, I think we're getting somewhere.
What I'd suggest you do is contact an attorney. If you think this is...
Oh, no, I'm not contacting an attorney. Now, that will not be happening. I'm talking about facts. It's just like trying to say that this is not Columbus, Georgia, and this is wherever, but I know that this is called Columbus, Georgia. I know that Robin Thompson is not associated with twenty-nine thirty-seven.
We're, we're, we're going to get it worked out, and we're not going to...
Okay, I believe that. I know we, we started working out. And so are you going to talk to me about twenty-nine twenty-eight?
No, ma'am, not right now. I'm, I'm not going to talk to you about it.
Okay, but I told you today, I left the public, the second floor of Superior Court, and they gave me paperwork stating...
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna check into it. I promise you, we're not going to tear down the house that belongs to somebody that, that we have not had record, recorded, so...
Okay, okay, thank you.
Well, you're welcome. We will take care of it.
All right. The next property is four eighty Timber Lane Drive, Estate of Catherine Jacqueline Wiggins. Don't see any hands, Mr. Mayor. Four oh six Seventeenth Avenue, Lamros LLC. Anybody here? All right, forty-one thirty-one Second Avenue, Johnny General, owner. Don't see anybody. Fifty-two ten Forest Road, Premium Oil Station Number Six, owner. All right, and is this the last one? Twenty-nine oh four Ninth Street, Melissa Hall. All right, those six will stay on the list, Mayor, if Mr. Pruitt learns any more information. What's a pleasure, Counsel? Do you want us to bring them next week on the consent agenda or wait till February?
If, if there's, I mean, we can bring them on the consent agenda unless there's something being contested. If she's contesting that and we haven't gotten it straightened out, I think you bring it in February.
That's fine. All right, Mr. Pruitt? We'll be in touch.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Okay, the next item, this is an amendment to the pay plan. Counsel has approved this in concept by resolution for pay increase for sworn officers, CPD and E nine one one, effective February third. This is first reading. Are there any other questions? I know they've got some officials here.
There's no, no questions.
Okay, did y'all have anything on that?
No, sure.
Okay, we'll bring that back on the consent agenda next week so it can go into effect February third. Then we've got the mid-year budget amendment. Deputy City Manager Hodge and Ms. Alexander may still be here. If there are any questions, this is first reading on the mid-year budget. These funds are increasing as shown. Any questions around the table?
No, sure.
All right, Ms. Alexander, did you want to make any comment? Okay.
Sorry, I was trying to print something. So this FY twenty-four mid-year budget amendment that's on the agenda today is really a housekeeping item. The amendment is usually done to incorporate all prior year purchase orders and any carryovers that utilize fund balance that are not adopted as part of the original budget. It also incorporates into the individual departmental budgets those pay, pay plan adjustments that were approved as part of the, as part of the budget. And it also encapsulates any additional amendments that's required to continue sufficient operations of the government. So what's included here on the handout that you have, I printed out the mid-year budget amendment as well as the chart that shows the individual adjustments by department. In the general fund, there is utilization of reserves and carryover funds for various projects to include, let's see what it includes, general government and public safety capital, replacing some bathrooms and pavilions at various parks. The emergency management operations center relocation. And all of these items do not impact the reserve total that was reported initially that we were projecting for the FY twenty-four budget. Those items do not impact the reserves. But there are some items, some adjustments that do impact reserves for, for other initiatives. One of those being the addition of a full-time information, security manager, increases for the inmate medical and mental health contracts, transfers to Bull Creek for, Forgotten Creek, and the golf course master plan, cameras for City Hall, the Am West extension, and as well as renovations for the Sheriff's Admin Building. Those do impact the reserve adjustments. Usage's about ten days, so we're currently at an estimate, estimated reserve balance of about ninety days.
Counsel Davis?
Madam Finance Director, I was just going to ask you, compared to last year and where we're at this year, how are you feeling? Pretty good about things where we're at right here as far as midterm and this carryover? I know we're down a little bit, or are we up from last year? I don't remember.
Revenues are not up right now, not as of the middle of the year. You know, there was some delay in posting the property tax revenue, some report issues that we, that have been subsequently resolved with the Tax Commissioner's Office. So I anticipate, hopefully, we'll see how that sort of smoothes out as we go into February as far as those property tax revenues. But from an expenditure standpoint, we are obviously up significantly this year than where we were last year, but we are not at the top of where we should be from a budgetary standpoint. From a budget standpoint, we, it would be expected that we would expend about ninety-four million in the general fund, and we're at about eighty-nine right now in terms of budget to actual expenditures.
Well, it looks, I know we've, we've had some emergencies and we, some expenditures, like you say. I think most of those, though, the way I read it, tell me if I'm wrong, the way I read, a lot of them are coming from restricted funds, utilize our restricted funds, but I may be seeing that right, but it sounds like so far, so good where we're at.
Well, most of the reserve usage here is money that's already reserved, that was already restricted and set aside for that specific purpose.
Okay, that's a good thing, right?
Mm-hmm, it is.
Okay, thank you for the report. Appreciate it.
Mr. Uglie?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll bring that back next week with no objection on the consent agenda. Item nine on our agenda, Mayor, Counselor Tucker requested a delay. She had to leave to take care of family, and she said they may, she and Counselor Begley may have some different wording proposed. Can't we just delay that for the time being?
All right, there's a motion to, is that a motion, Counsel? Motion second to delay. For how long?
Counsel Begley, do you have a time period or are you just...
Two, two weeks, maybe?
Unless... Thirty days. Sure.
Okay. All right. Motion second to delay for thirty days. All in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
Okay, the resolutions, we've got three. The first one up is naming Sunday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, as a Sunday date allowed by state law for alcohol sales for bars and nightclubs. That is St. Patrick's Day.
All right, it's a motion second. All in favor say aye? Any opposed?
All right.
Yeah, we didn't, we did check the calendar this year, right?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved for St. Patrick's Day. I'm not sure if our engineer is still here, but we've got a variance hearing for Wasserman Group LLC, twenty forty-five Old Guard Road. I believe this is a senior living facility.
The only, the only question I had about it, I know Mr. Bowers is here, is has our, I know the engineers looked at it, has the public safety blessed this? Because I know it's a little sharper curve, narrower street, and privately done, right?
Yes, we've met with the fire department.
Okay, just, just wanted it on the record, make sure we're comfortable getting those folks back there.
All right, you can take a vote on the request for variance, Mayor.
Motion, motion and a second to approve. Counsel Davis, is this to the, all right, all in favor say aye? Are there any opposed? All right, Counsel Davis?
Director Newman, we, you know, in the past, we've had a lot of concerns about the road there, Old Guard Road. Have we, have we been able to address some of the signage issues and maybe some of the traffic coming devices or flashing sign, whatever we can put there to help out with slowing cars down, definitely during the school time hours. I think we had mentioned that the school had to have some kind of say-so in that. I know it affects their development, and certainly their neighbors are always concerned about it.
Correct. We are, we're looking in at all school zones and working with the police department. You know, they're implementing in some areas the speed cameras, so we are working with them with all of those.
Good, good, thank you.
It's a process.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, the related resolution request of Wasserman Group would be the issuance of bonds by Northwest Georgia Housing Authority. Columbus just has to approve that because the facility is here and they want some tax-exempt financing.
Motion second to approve the bond issuance. All in favor say aye? Are there any opposed? Oh, okay. Yes, sir.
Since it's in my district, I just want everybody to know that, that still, the development is, is that we talked about is still on course. It's just a finance option that they've asked us to, to help them with, but everything else is still on track as the, as originally proposed.
Good, thanks. All right, is that it, Mr.?
That's the last business item. We do have a request for personnel executive session, time permitting, if that's it.
All right, we'll move into the public agenda. Thank all of those who are appearing for their patients. First is Ms. Pat Frey representing Georgia five oh five Continuum of Care and our school board member.
Thank you for having me, and I will be very, very, very brief. But again, thank you for having me. It's time once again for our annual point in time count. I've given you some information to include some information about last year's count and where we were with numbers briefly. We will be doing our count in Muskogee and Russell County because as you remember, our, 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 our point town count chair is here. Maybe we're still here. Yay! Holly has served as our point in time count chair for five, six years there? Um, Holly has served as our point in time count chair for five, six years there? Um, so thank you for, for hanging out. Um, our, our point in time count, again, uh, it covers Muskogee and Russell County, cause we are one of three COCs in the nation that do cross state lines. Um, so we will be doing our sheltered count, which is where we go into all of the shelters in our community. We'll be doing that on Monday night, starting at about six o'clock, and we'll finish up about eight-thirty. We'll be back, um, in the office at five-thirty the next morning to do the unsheltered count. Uh, and we will wrap that up between twelve and one, uh, I'm sorry, twelve a- and lunchtime. Um, we did see an increase in homeless numbers from last year. We saw thirteen percent increase across the nation was a, about a fourteen percent increase. If you've read any of the articles lately, everyone's seeing seventeen to twenty percent, um, is what's being predicted going forward. There are a number of factors that, that caused those numbers to go up. We would be here until tomorrow this time to go over those, not to mention on how we deal with them. Um, but again, Holly has chaired the, 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 the count for many years and, and has served with countless volunteers to make sure that we do a thorough count. We are literally going from the most southern point of the city and, 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 and both the counties to the most northern, east and west side. Uh, our people will be in places you would never believe that they would be in. Um, and thanks to the city of Columbus, the city in, uh, Phoenix City and Russell County for providing law enforcement and sheriff's deputies to go with our, 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 uh, volunteers. If you can imagine, it's pretty dark at six o'clock in the morning when you're out under the bridge beside, behind Metropolitan Baptist Church. So those things are, are much appreciated. Welcome you to come out and, and say thank you to the volunteers for not joining us, um, and if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Frey? Some amazing job that you do. Holly, thanks for your leadership, too.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking around here, too.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks, Holly.
All right. Next is Mr. Mick Etchison, re- representing St. Thomas Episcopal Church's Creation Keepers. Uh, it's regarding a request for the Columbus City Council to join with other Georgia cities in voicing opposition to the mining proposal of our state's national treasure, the Okefenokee Swamp. Mr. Etchison, welcome, sir.
I am not Mick Etchison. This is Mick Etchison.
I know Mick, I was...
I'm Arthur France, member of St. Thomas and the Creation Keepers Group. Um, as you said, we are here today to ask Council to send a resolution or by whatever means, uh, deemed, uh, necessary to Governor Kemp, expressing the Council's support for House Bill seventy-one filed by Representative Darlene Taylor, Republican of Thomasville. The purpose of the bill is to protect the Okefenokee Swamp from mining operations. A mining company from Birmingham, Alabama is seeking per- permits from the Georgia Environmental Division to begin extracting titanium dioxide, which is common in the area, and not to be confused with the hard metal titanium. This is a sand that's got, um, the substance in it. It's used for paints and alarmingly also for toothpaste. Um, the problem with this is that the operation involves mining thirty-five to fifty feet below the Okefenokee's water level. It's not in the swamp, it's just adjacent to it. The Okefenokee is a shallow swamp at a hundred and twenty-five feet above sea level. The mining company's operations will alter groundwater flows and likely lead to permanently lower water levels in the swamp. In addition, they will be extracting water from an area lower than the Okefenokee. The refuge is primarily replenished by rainwater and is very susceptible to drought. Extracting large amounts of water from this depth will further threaten the swamp, especially during periods of low rainfall. This would lead to dangerous drying of the swamp, creating a major wild, wildfire threat. The swamp is made up of large amounts of peat moss that, when dried, become highly flammable. Wild fires in the swamp could threaten the numerous tree farms in the area as well as present a serious threat of dangerous air pollution from the fires. Just as critical would be the loss of a magnificent and unique ecosystem full of lar- a large diverse population of animals and plants specific to the Okefenokee. The refuge is a huge area, three times the size of Muskogee County. The refuge is visit- visited by six hundred thousand people per year and is a well-known natural feature of Georgia. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has designated it as a national wildlife refuge. The National Park Service nominated the refuge for inclusion in the UNESCO Program of World Heritage Sites. This would encourage more tourists to visit the swamp, increasing the swamp's value to the state of Georgia and to the country. It is a fragile ecosystem that must have unique protections to maintain the integrity of this ecosystem. I refer you to the document we ma- emailed, I believe, to each of you to view the numerous people and organizations that support the bill.
You've got one more minute, sir.
How many?
One.
I'll, I'll wrap it up. Several other Georgia cities have signed resolutions and sent them on to the governor. The bill enjoys overwhelming bipartisan support in the House and passage seems assured. The document provides further information about the refuge and the threat that exists there. We urge the Council to write a resolution supporting HB seventy-one, protecting the Okefenokee as soon as possible, and send it to Governor Kemp. Any comments, questions? Uh, do my best to answer them.
Well, thank you, thank you for, um, for your advocacy. Thank you for, uh, for being here to let Council know and to ask for their help. And I, I feel certain that they'll do the research and, uh, and we'll be meeting again next week. And, uh, we'll see if, if any of them wants to sponsor a resolution.
Okay.
But thank you very much. Thank you for your patience, but thank you for, again, for your advocacy for the environment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Did I do something?
No, sir, I did.
Oh, that's my time, okay.
All right. Next is Mr. Marvin Broadwater Senior regarding professional baseball in Columbus, Georgia. Mr. Broadwater, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council members, the ones that are still here, uh, Mr. City Attorney and Mr. City Manager. Uh, my name is Marvin Broadwater Senior. I reside in Columbus, Georgia, three one nine zero nine. First, as always, I, I pray you are well, and I thank you for your continued service to our community. And, um, according to news sources, uh, I see three council members here who have either said no or have not made a decision yet on the baseball team. And that's what I'm gonna talk about tonight. And I wanna quote, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Kogle, who said, "You have to spend money to make money." She said that this evening. Um, and I thought that was qu- quite, uh, ironic that I would come to speak on that very subject tonight. Many times constituents appear at this podium only to list complaints or voice grievances, me included. But today, I would like to address and simply say thank you and employ you to go deeper and think out of the box to help our citizens and city even more. I realize that no signatures have gone on any dotted line of any contract as of yet, but your willingness to research the colossal opportunity to br- to bring a professional baseball team to our community is a rightful example of courage. The significant and economic impact this venture will present is mammoth improvement for our community. This investment will help our citizens for generations. I realize for many of you, it was a difficult decision as there is a strategic movement in the city not to include all of our citizens in the prosperity that our constitution alludes to. During this week, I had conversation with real estate agents, community power brokers, community developers, and the president of the Chamber of Commerce. I learned that the total economic impact of such a project is calculated to be in the range of three hundred and fifty to four hundred million dollars. One community developer explained to me, because of the close proximity of the nearest TAD district, this area will be a great benefactor of this endeavor. Again, I said, "Thank you." This venture will ensure the revitalization of that area. And I'm talking about the Liberty District, formerly known as BTW. But then I wanna go, I want you to go a little further. I want all the citizens to look at this, cause I'm gonna post this everywhere I got. Because I want you to go further than just Golden Park. I humbly ask you to continue to think out of the box to assist all of our citizens in realizing the American dream of prosperity. For this to happen, you must all use your resources and your influ- influence to ensure large corporations and businesses are established in Oakland Park, Casita Road, St. Mary's Road, Steen Mill Road, and Brown Avenue. And the Benin Drives of our community, because it's all over. You see, I do believe, I know I have one minute left, I do believe that when you bring everyone up, your crime goes down. And it doesn't matter how many dollars you have in the bank, it doesn't matter how, what zip code you live at. If we don't control crime through economic development, it hurts everyone in this city. Because when we can't, we, we, we don't bring those Fortune five hundred countries here, companies here, it hurts all of us. It hurts the school district. So I employ and I ask those of you who said that you are gonna vote no, those of you who hadn't made a choice yet, I would ask you to really consider that. And go to the South Side and talk to some of the folks that are gonna truly benefit from this. But we will all benefit. Uh, may God bless you, keep doing what you're doing. I believe in you. I believe in you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Broadwater. All right. And, um, is Mr. Nathan Smith here? I don't believe I saw him. So Reverend Richard Jesse, representing the Friends of Historic Claflin, to announce the return of the FHC and present our plan to help restore social order. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and all of our city leaders who are left. Uh, ten years ago, uh, Martin Luther King's birthday. I appeared before, the day before Martin Luther King's birthday, I appeared, appeared before this council, and I asked three things. I asked that we would shorten the time that, uh, citizens spent in the Muskogee County Jail. I asked that we would consider how we could turn some of those prison jails, those, uh, public work jobs into paying jobs. And I called the city to, uh, ninety days of fasting and prayer. And what we had, uh, decided to consider was to give up dirty language for ninety days. Uh, profanity, uh, flag names, racial slurs, mean and hateful communications towards one another. And I came back ninety days later and, uh, Mayor Tomlinson at the time referred me to Judge Gil McBride. Uh, we formed a criminal justice reform team. And the first month, uh, we were able to get seventy-five people released from the jail who were down on technicalities. I'm gonna thank the City Council for later on approving a rapid resolution initiative that allows people, uh, if they're willing to, uh, plead guilty for whatever crime they might have committed, uh, to get out of jail before they lose their car, their home, uh, and everything else. Um, when the pandemic hit, uh, we, uh, at Claflin shut down. Uh, we shut down our construction work. We had just gotten our certificate of occupancy after we had restored the school. And we shut down our community work. Uh, this month, we're gonna pick up where we left off. And we have a plan to help restore social order. We had the responsibility of coming up with a community, uh, education component. Uh, and our mission is to help restore social order. Um, on, I, I sent all of you today, uh, our plan for, uh, for our mission, which is, uh, called Project Thirteen. You'll see it in your emails. Uh, it calls for citizens to work together for twelve months to do some very specific things. Um, and one of those things, uh, in our, uh, in that group, that, that email that I sent you, we have a group of reforms, social reforms and church reforms. I wish that you would look at them and consider them. And those of you who agree with them, we would like to get your endorsement of those reforms. Just three social reforms, four church reforms. Project Thirteen, uh, also, uh, calls, called for us to implement a Piers program. Piers, uh, is an equal, is a honorable person, decent person. And our Piers program is an equalization program. Uh, our first two things, and we want the council, we'll be back to talk about this. Um, on our social reforms, we want this council to consider enforcing the minor curfew laws, or the state curfew laws. I remember, uh, thirty years ago, we asked the council to do that. Uh, council didn't do it, but when Mayor Peters became mayor, he implemented and enforced the, uh, curfew laws. And I remember the headlines in the ledger in choir, "Curfew Laws Working." And I, I, we want you to really think seriously about it, but we'll be back, uh, to try to get you to vote on that. And the last thing, uh, most of you aware of what happened at the Carver Spencer game in August? This fight broke out, it was just total chaos. Uh, we are calling veterans, associate ministers, neighborhood watchers, uh, to be trained as monitors, as community watchers. Uh, some of these people will be able to become bus monitors. Our school system said, super, didn't, say they don't have enough bus monitors. But we will be watching over our neighborhood. And if veterans can go all around the world policing up these other countries, uh, certainly we can and will police up our own neighborhood.
Chris Jesse, thank you, sir.
Oh, that's the end, huh?
That's the end.
About one minute, Mark.
No, 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 you got, but you, you can have three more minutes after the clerk's agenda if you wanna stick around for a little bit.
Can I make one more sentence?
Uh, one more sentence?
One more sentence.
It better be a short one.
We're gonna have our first meeting in the new Claflin Auditorium Thursday at six o'clock and Saturday at two o'clock. We're inviting volunteers to come and hear our plane. Thank you.
Thank you for your commitment to Claflin, too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Manager? We're not gonna be able to take any out. Okay. Chris here? All right. Mr. City Manager, your agenda, sir?
Mayor, first I've got a street acceptance of Brownie at Lane.
Motion to approve the street acceptance. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. Any discussion? Chris, would you cue it? Counselors, enter your votes, please. Uh, it's approved?
Got a memorandum of understanding with Columbus U Soccer Association.
Motion to approve the MOU with the CYSA. Uh, is there a second? All right, motion second. All, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, cue it. Thank you. Thank you.
I've got the motion to approve three, two, five, six.
All right, there's a motion to, um, approve items three, four, five, and six. Is there any one of those somebody wants pulled for discussion? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, would you, Mr. City Manager, if you'd walk through those?
Yes, sir. I've got the FY twenty-four HUD Annual Action Plan substantial amendment. And then I've got the FY twenty-five Holiday Schedule, uh, recommending Thursday, December twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, be designated floating holiday. Got Firehouse Sub Grant with Columbus Fire EMS. It's twenty-seven thousand fifteen dollars. Uh, I've got International Association of Fire Chiefs Donation of Equipment, um, and, um, Request Accept Donation of Three Rapid Intervention Team Kits valued at fourteen thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. Those are, um, those items, Mayor. Then I've got purchases. Um, got...
Motion second to approve the purchases, A, B, C, and D. All right, we'll, we'll let's, we'll pull B and, uh, and vote on A, C, and D. Uh, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, now...
Um, uh, A is firefighter cancer insurance policy renewal. It's a legislative required cancer insurance for firefighters, fifty-three thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Uh, C would be one twenty twenty-four, four one fifty police responder for MCP, uh, was totaled in an accident. D would be facial recognition software and maintenance for a police department, seven one thousand seven dollars. And...
All right, Counselor Crabbe had a question on B.
Yes.
I was just, could you explain what's going on with Mott's Green with the rebid?
Yeah, Mott's Green has been a project we have been...
I know, since I first cut on.
Yeah, forever. And, um, and so, um, just kind of a, a, a history. Well, why don't I, why don't you go ahead and talk about it, Donna?
Sure. This, this project has been bid a couple of different times. When it was initially bid, um, it came in over budget, so we had to look for some additional funding. Um, and then we ran into, of course, COVID and supply issues, and so we, um, had to rebid it, and when we did, we went, the low bidder was a different contractor. That required us to go back to GDOT, and the construction agreement had to be redone, and because at the time GDOT personnel were working from home, so it took longer than expected. It took right out a year to get that agreement in place. Um, and so then by that time, we were getting close to the Whitewater event, and we didn't want to start the construction there when we were gonna have visitors on the Riverwalk, so we delayed it even more. And so we initially went back to the original bidder on the last bid and see if he would hold his price, and there were some cost increases in materials. So, um, we then had to identify, um, some additional funds, and so now we think we have everything in place and ready to move forward.
I'm listening, Chris.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
The Pro Tem, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, uh, the council... Did you want to... Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, item one, this is a matter of information. It's a Certificate of Need application that was submitted on behalf of Southeastern Cardiology Associates. It's to establish a positron emission service in Columbus, Georgia. Item two is a resolution to excuse Counselor Barnes from today's meeting.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And it passes.
Item three is a travel authorization request for Counselor Huff.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
Item four, a minute of various boards, severe receipt.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
Next, we have the mayor's appointments, and I will come back to those. However, um, the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, uh, Mr. Mayor did express an interest in renominating Aaron Guest. He may be confirmed.
Mr. Guest? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? It passes.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Ms. Kathleen Mullins was nominated to serve another term. She may be confirmed.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? It passes.
Also, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Douglas Jeffcoat.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
Building Authority of Columbus, Ms. Olive Virel Kendall.
Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
Also, Building Authority.
D through I.
D through I.
Counselor Crabbe is recommending, uh, D through I, and that's Mr. Christopher Smith for Building Authority. For Circle, Ms. Pete, Mr. Pete Temezian, also Chai Kennedy, and Planning Advisory Commission, Brad Baker, Ms. Lakishma Karthik, and Mr. Michael Ernest for the PAC.
Was that your nomination? It's your motion, I'm sorry. Your motion. Okay.
Was there a second?
There was a second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, they pass.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. Uh, Counselor Garrett, uh, he was nominating, um, Mr. Julio Portello, uh, as his nominee, as the District Eight representative, and he may be confirmed.
Move confirmation. Motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And it passes.
And then Counselor Begley was nominating James Jordan as his representative for, uh, Evan Collins' seat. He may be confirmed.
Move confirmation. Motion second. Confirm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And then Counselor Kogle is still working on her nominee for the District Seven. Uh, we also have a vacant seat in District Two, uh, and then District Three. Virginia Dickerson is not eligible to serve another term. Uh, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, Counselor Huff is nominating Angela Strange, and we will bring this back for confirmation. For Circle, we have Aleah Tesorn, uh, not eligible to serve another term. This seat is open for nominations. For the Historic and Architectural Review Board, the seat of Libby Smith, this is the historic district resident. It is open for nominations. For the Tree Board, the seat of Frank Tommy, this is the residential development seat. He is not eligible to serve another term. This seat is open for nominations, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. Uh, Counselor Davis?
Madam Clerk, I know during the near term, there's gonna be a seat open on Development Authority, and, uh, Will White, I'd like to put him on the list. He's interested in serving.
Thank you, Counselor Davis, and, uh, make note of this when this appointment comes up.
Counselor Huff?
Uh, Mr. City Manager, uh, if you would, get them to check into Bonka Hill. It's still a problem. Uh, they redid, they resurfaced the road, then they had problems at the end and around the driveways, and then they went back out, and the other day, the road's breaking up. Uh, I think it's around that hill there, that four-way stop in that area. Yeah, but it's coming apart. You could actually see the, uh, double lines going one direction, the asphalt going another. Uh, thank you.
All right. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Could you also look at the lousy patch job they did on Armor Road, right where, you know, the, the turn into the hotels and right where that gas station is? They're just really bad. I mean, it's, it's, I think it was better before they paved it. Thank you.
All right. And I think we had a request to go into executive session on personnel. All right. Um, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second to go into, uh, executive session regarding personnel. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are, uh, in executive session. All right, we, uh, we have been in executive session, and were no votes taken. Uh, we are back in regular session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah, it was on, it was, I'm sorry, that we discussed personnel. Thank you. And again, no votes were taken. Still no votes taken. Motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, all right, we're adjourned.